I know, I know. So don't get that ready. Okay, I would like to call to order the planning committee. Let the record reflect that all members are are present with the exception of council member Bolosan and council member Kuli. Clerk, could you please read the first item on our agenda?
Minutes of the April 16, 2025 Planning Committee meeting.
Move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, move in second and thank you for that. Moving on to members.
All those in favor.
Sorry, did I? Public testimony. So all those in.
Is there any members of the public wishing to testify on the minutes?
Anyone?
If not, all those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Members, this is a markets bill. And I'd like to suspend the rules and ask council member Kana Shero to provide an overview of the bill once we go through the rules. Okay?
Bill number 2951, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapter 8, Kauai County Code 1987 as amended relating to commercial use of parks facilities.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
I do have amendment.
Okay.
I'd like to amend as circulated. Move to amend as circulated. While, while the amendment is being circulated. Oh, I need a second.
I did, I seconded it.
Oh.
She, she is seconded.
Okay. Um, while it's being circulated, um, this amendment is coming from the planning department. And had some input from, from me and council member Holland as far as tightening up a few things that we heard in the, in the first, first reading of the bill. And so I'll go through, we have a presentation real quick. I'll go through a quick summary of the amendment and the changes. Majority of it is housekeeping amendments and then there's some little more substantial amendments just that I think people will be in favor of. So we did hear in the past that there was worries about the neighbors not having any input and so inserted into this amendment is some input by the neighbors, which you'll see as we go through the presentation.
Mr. Chair, if I could just think of comment. The reason why everyone is reading it now is because of the sunshine law. We are not privy to this until today. So just please be patient because this is the first time we're seeing the amendment as well. Appreciate the patience. Thank you.
It looks like a lot of stuff, but at the end of the day, there's 20 items in the amendment. But when you change the CZO and the table, you have to kind of change everything. So it like is a big ripple effect. So that's why there's, it looks really long. The amendment is 13 pages. I'll go through it really quickly. Um, number one in the amendment is just housekeeping. It removes unneeded wording and word choice changes. So you can see, um, in the original, we put means for the purpose of this chapter in almost every definition. And they just deleted that and just put means. So that's the type of changes that happens with this first amendment. The second amendment, community use facility. Number two. It's at the bottom of page one. We added criteria and an applicant must satisfy to qualify as a community use facility. And you can see it in yellow. County of Kauai, Director of Parks and Recreation and Planning Director shall determine the parcel to be commensurate with County of Kauai Park Facility. To make this determination, Director shall consult with other governmental government agencies, including but not limited to the State of Hawaii Preservation Division, oh, State of Hawaii Department of Health, Department of Land and Natural Resources, State Historic Preservation Division, Department of Transportation, and County Department of Public Works, Department of Public Works. Number three. Clarifies the total number of days for each market type per parcel. And again, you cannot break it up. It's two events a week, period. Um, it doesn't matter if it's, you have three different people that try to do it. It's two events a week. Any, any more than two events goes to use permit. So. Number four. Is just housekeeping on the CZO, the CZO table of uses. Number five is a housekeeping on the CZO. Page three. Yeah, then the number is the, I'm just talking about the amendment.
So these colored pieces up above, uh, is, is, is limiting it, um, no more than two calendar days per week total. Regarding, so that's just being repeated.
For, yeah. For farm, yeah. So it's repeated farmers market one and farmers market two. It clarifies that it's two days or less. And then.
Total, no matter how many.
Yeah. And then for farmers market, I mean, farmers market one and artisans market one, two days or less. And farmers market two and artisans market two is more than two days a week. Says more than two calendar days per calendar week. Then, um, on page three, four and five are just housekeeping amendments to the CZO table. On six through 17, we started splitting. At one time we had, um, farmers market one, artisans market one, and events concessions all together as a group originally. And we decided to split them all because there are certain instances where they have different permitting processes. So amendment 16 through 17 is just splitting them in each use. So residential, resort, commercial, whatever, it's just splitting, splitting them all. And then if we go to amendment number 18, which is on page 12. This is where we added something based on our meeting, the last meeting that we had where, you know, we're hearing concerns that the public doesn't get any input. And so we added this P5 note, which requires the applicant to send out notifications to part, to property owners that are within 300 feet of the parcel. And if they get a response that's 51% or more against, um, the event, then it's pretty much done. Like they're not going to be able to go through the farmers market one process or the artisans market one process. And they'd have to go to a use perm, get a use permit. Whether they'll be able to get it with a use permit, knowing that 51% or more of their neighbors don't like it, I would say is probably not going to happen either. But that's what we added to get public info, to get the public input on the neighbors, you know, making sure that we're not, just not putting, um, these type of events somewhere where the neighbors are going to be unhappy. In addition to that, we also added on the bottom that anytime during, during the year, the neighbors can come back and. Well, might have had to be 51% now. Yeah, more than 50. Anytime during the year, more than 50% of the neighbors can come back and then the planning department can retract it. So. On the initial end, you need to send out the notifications. And then anytime throughout the year, if, you know, if, I don't know, for some reason, the event gets so successful that cars start overflowing into everybody's yards and parking, the neighbors can come back and say, you know, we don't think this is commensurate with what the original intent is. And the neighbors can go, owners within 300 feet can go and say, um, yeah, we don't like this event anymore. And it would have to be over 50%. And that was the main one. The main, that, that was the main. That was the main amendment for us, you know, um, to get public input and to allow planning to claw it back if the event, um, for some reason turns out, you know, to morph into something that the neighbors don't like anymore. So I know it's a lot, um, planning, if you want to come up to, I'm sure we'll probably have questions on this. And yeah, I'll take any questions.
Any questions for?
On the amendment, I know it's a lot, so.
And you got to push your kind of.
Suspend the rules and any questions?
So if you're not speaking, turn your mic off. The brand new system today, guys.
Brand new system.
I mean, I'm watching this on the TV. It's beautiful. How's that screen? Did you guys read what's on the screen now? Thanks to our IT department.
I noticed one small thing, um, would be page 12. We meant to have everything be consistent at greater than 50%. At one time we had it on our previous track, we had it as 40 and 60, which was following liquor commissions on percentages. But we made the decision to just make it, um, a majority of the neighbors. So it should be, it has 50% on the initial, but it has 60% on the backend. But, um, if you guys are okay, I'd love to change that to 50%. If we can just make a friendly amendment to make it 50%.
Totally fine with that.
Okay, so, yeah.
Um, I, I have questions.
Yeah.
Um, and if I could ask staff, um, I have those, that list of parks. Do you have that? Can we pass that out? Um, thank you, everybody, for all the work that's there. And, um, I, I'm really pretty fine with the community use facilities. And the reason why I'm fine with the, this is going to be a question, but the reason why I am fine with the community use facilities, especially with this about the neighbors being able to have some input. So if we can give them this also, and, and maybe if there's an extra one, you know, for the audience, if, if somebody wants to look at it. I'm fine with the community use facilities because almost all of them, I can't think of a one of them. Do you know, um, Planning Director Hall, in the community use facilities, are you aware of any that we have that doesn't have some sort of governing board or homeowners association affiliated with it?
Uh, Danny Hunsen, Kyle Holland, behalf of the planning department, I'm joined here with the lead planner, Alicia Summers. So the question is, am I aware for community use facilities if there's neighborhood boards or other governing entities?
Any that don't have it, like why? The Ag Park in Kilauea. I'm trying to think of which all the ones that we have, certainly, um, uh, Grove Farm, they all have a governing board. So if they have a problem, that governing board is available to be held accountable or to, to their constituents and fix it. Is that correct?
Well, I can say of the markets that are operating today that you just listed, generally speaking, they, they do have governing boards.
Okay, um, because I'm trying to think what other community use facilities, we would have churches, we would have schools, those typically have a governing board of some sort. Can you think of a community use facility that is not governed by anything?
Well, the, the bill proposes a new classification of land use to be a community use facility. And it has criteria for a community use facility. So technically, there's no zoning use right now that's a community use facility. So I, I can't really answer your questions to say like, these community use facilities today in that there are churches out there, there are nonprofit groups, there are, you know, various entities that would fall into the definition of community use facility as it's been proposed in the draft bill. But I can't say today community use facility because technically from a zoning perspective, that use doesn't exist.
Kind of like.
Okay.
Do we have one?
I just wanted to add, I mean, if it's as far as who's responsible, at the end of the day, I think it's the landowner that's responsible, you know, to answer any questions or what, or the landowner's agent.
Correct. So I'm just trying to say why I have more comfortability with markets in community use facilities kind of in the immediate future because they don't have the challenge that may be just a miscellaneous park. I passed out a list that I did of all the parks. I color coded it by, by areas, by MOU, so we know which areas and what, the council members, if you're looking at this, it is, um, you see, there's a really broad diversity of the types and sizes of parks, whether they have bathrooms, whether they have games, all kinds of elements to it. So can you speak to us for a moment about, this is really a parks question, but he's not here today. Is that correct? He's.
Correct.
Correct. So I'm just going to ask you about the peddlers and concessionaires ordinance that we passed. Can you speak to that for a moment?
I can speak briefly and I'm not intimately familiar with.
Okay, but we did talk about it and I said I was going to be asking you. So can you tell us something about that?
Well, the, the Parks Department.
I did, um, council member, I think I know where your questions are going. I did prepare, um, a spreadsheet.
Again, my goal is, we heard from our public testimony how economically dependent this particular park is and this particular market is. And they had an urgent request to be able to return to business quickly. So, um, I support that. But I'm, I'm, when I look at the process of rules and regulations, my understanding from talking to the parks departments is the rules and regulations aren't in place yet for peddlers and concessionaires, which is what would be applying to public parks, um, putting these markets in. Is that correct?
Ultimately, the Parks Department, should the bill be adopted as is, where farmers markets and artisan markets are allowed in county and state parks? The Parks Department doesn't have the ability to start handing out permits for farmers markets. They need to go through an administrative rule process making for specific parks, which parks, um, and what criteria farmers or artisan markets. and what criteria farmers or artisan markets event could be hosted in one of their assets. So if the bill were adopted today, as is, there is not a process in play for parks to immediately start processing applications.
Okay, and if I can speak to the attorney just for a little bit on that. My understanding, so maybe you can help clarify that. When we spoke to parks, so I just want to make sure I understood correctly from parks, they have probably at least a few more months before they're ready, possibly the end of summer, ready to do the rules and regulations. Is that correct?
Deputy County Attorney Laura Barzagli. Yes, that's correct, Councilmember. It would take them some time to effect rules for this particular program.
So if we, if we pass this bill the way it's written, would those rules and regulations apply to community use facilities as well?
No, Councilmember, because they're not subject to peddlers and concessionaires.
Okay, and just help me understand where that is. So just we're all clear.
So peddlers and concessionaires is for park properties.
And so?
The ordinance itself.
And so the community use facilities, I know a number of them already have a special permit, right? A number of the community use, like Waipah, Anaiho, the Ag Park, they already have a special use permit? Because I was asked by those, and I believe I gave the right answer, that the county can't permit, if some, a group wanted to do a market in what is already a special use permit, based on the application process, they couldn't independently work around the leadership of a community use facility.
I think we need a specific example that maybe the planning director can address here, because he would be familiar with the terms of whatever permit, maybe I am too. Do you have a specific example that you can give us?
Well, this was a question that came to me yesterday from one of the special permitted facilities. I don't want to name it. But if, if there was a group that says, hey, we want to do an artisans market in your field over here, they would have to go to the management of that special use facility, that private park, community use facility. They couldn't just go to the planning department and get a permit to work on a private piece of property. That is impossible, correct?
Under the draft bill, potentially under the community use facility, they could.
They could do that? They could come to the Parks Department without the agreement?
No, sorry, sorry. No, so they could come to, so if our community use facility, the process is laid out for those for private lands, non-state, non-county parks, that if you would like to host a farmer's market, at a minimum, you have to demonstrate that the property is five acres in size. And at a minimum, you have to demonstrate that it's open to the general public, or at least during the market hours, that it won't have restrictive access. If they can demonstrate that their five acre parcel, five acre plus parcel or more is open to the general public, then there's a strong, they would get a determination of community use facility. From there, they'd have to apply for a class one zoning permit, and they'd have to notify all the abutting property owners within three hundred feet. If less than, under the draft amendment, if less, if, if the majority of the property owners don't object, then it could proceed to get that, say, artisans market. But if the majority of property owners object, then that new market would have to go to the planning commission for a use permit.
So let's say we have an existing market, because that's the situation, an existing market with a special permit, or a use permit. They have a use permit that went through the committee, I mean, with the planning commission. Already has it. If anybody wants, if anybody, a group wants to do a market on their, let's just, I'm going to make it up, their Thursday afternoon when they aren't doing something, they still have to have the approval of the governing board and the signature of the governing board on the petition, or, excuse me, the application to go before the Parks Department. I'm just trying to establish for those that have existing commercial use facilities, that nothing's going to happen without the agreement of their board.
The ones that you listed, Waipah, Anaiho, the Ag Park in Kilauea, those aren't all on agricultural lands. And they all have, right now, use permits for farmers' markets. The only thing that they would probably attempt to do is, if they wanted to expand it, is to get artisan markets. And artisan markets under the draft bill are not allowed on agricultural lands through an over the counter process. So the bill for those three markets that you laid out, the artisan market aspect would not be a viable solution.
Well, then, this leads to another question, and I can stop, but other questions come in?
I'm just asking, is there more questions? Do you have a question?
I have more questions.
I was going to say, I mean, I could go through this permit process real quick if you want, and it kind of like splits out, you know, the different categories, it might help, and the process that everyone needs to go through.
Okay, let me ask one more question, and then we'll go through that one. My question is, being that I have bought all kinds of items that are artisan market items at those places that they're not allowed to do, I'm hearing currently they're not allowed to do that, I do buy those things at those places. Pretty much all of them. So almost all of them function as artisan markets as well, to some degree. I buy things, cards, all kinds of different items from them. I'm an active shopper from artisan markets. So this comes to, I guess, enforcement, because I would say it doesn't seem that we're able to enforce pretty much anywhere.
I'd say, Councilmember Callen, that those farmers' markets that are operating in Waipah, Anaiho, and Ag Park aren't permitted under the farmers' market standards here. They are permitted under their own use permits that have separate and apart conditions of approval. So whether or not they may be able to, say, sell products associated with the farm that aren't actual farm products, like advertisements for Lydgate Farms being sold on a farmer's market, is an example. There are certain conditions in those use permits that allow things a little bit above the farmer's market aspect. But I have to peel apart to, Ms. Barzagli's point earlier, I have to peel apart the specific conditions of each respective market to give you a response on what's allowed to be sold and those are not.
Okay, I'm going to let you.
Okay, yeah.
Real quick, so I'm looking at your form, and I notice on the top, it's farmers' markets one and artisan markets one. Does that include two as well?
No, because two, I didn't put two, because two's going to have to go to a use permit, no matter what.
Okay.
Yeah. So I kind of did this just to like compartmentalize, you know, the different processes with the different type of landowners and what it is. And because I did hear in some testimonies, you know, people were afraid of just like outright commercialization of county parks. But I think this will help show that there's a lot that goes into it before someone can actually do a commercial operation on, at a county park. So I'll start with farmers' market one and artisans' market one on private property, which is considered a community use facility. That process is going to fall under planning's class one zoning permit. Typically, a landowner or their landowner rep is going to go in and meet with planning and do an initial consultation and say, you know, we're thinking of doing this, what do we need to do? Planning is then going to have them complete a community use facility determination form, and they're going to apply for it. At that time, they're also going to send out notifications to landowners within three hundred feet of their parcel boundary. And then they still have to fill out a class one zoning permit. So I guess at the community use facility determination, planning has to determine that it is actually a community use facility. If they determine that, then they can go and send out notifications to the neighbors, and at the same time, they can start their class one zoning permit. If the notifications come in and more than fifty one, fifty percent don't want the project, then it's automatic, they're automatically not going to get a class one zoning permit, and they'd have to go through a use permit to try and do the activity. If they don't get fifty, more than fifty percent rejection, then they'll complete the class one zoning permit, which requires, you know, the parking and all that information, and then they'd be able to get it permitted. That's for private property.
I have a follow up question to that, Ben.
Okay.
If, say, this passed today. I have a follow up question to that. If, say, this passed today, this amendment passed today, and it went to second reading next week, and it passed then, it would, all these places would have, unless they already have a special use, a special permit, right? Like Waipah or Anaiho. But if they didn't have it, like Prince Albert Park, how, what phases of this do they have to go through? All of them?
All of them.
So what is the time window for that?
The time window for process one, if, if the majority of the landowners don't object surrounding the property, you're talking forty-five to sixty days. If the majority of the landowners do object, you're talking a minimum of six to eight months, which I would say that there's also strong potential for intervention if you have a fifty percent or more objection. And with intervention, you're looking at two to three years. And if you have fifty percent objecting, I can't speak for the commission, but if fifty percent of the neighbors object to a brand, a new use being proposed, more than likely, the commission, because it's a compatibility test, the commission's going to more than likely deny that use permit application.
So best case, if we pass this next week, just because I know a lot of people are economically dependent, we heard very passionate testimony, my heart goes out to you all. And I, you know, many of you, not everybody's in the room today, but many of you I've known for decades. So best case, if this passes today and next week, it's still probably close to two months.
I'd say a month and a half to two months.
Month and a half to two months. Okay, here.
The notification process allows for thirty days to receive, so that's already one month, no matter what.
Okay, all right. So then the next piece.
Okay, so the next piece is farmers' market one and artisans' market one on state park facility and county park facilities. And I'm not going to talk so much about state park facilities, because I'm not exactly sure how the state runs their stuff. But I can talk on the county park facility. So if someone wanted to do a farmers' market one or artisans' market one on county park facility, it falls under county code, chapter twenty-three, article three, peddlers and concession, concessionaires. And right now, there's no admin rules for farmers' market or artisans' market. So Parks Department is going to have to create and execute admin rules to govern farmers' market one and artisans' market one activities. And that process includes a public hearing and two meetings with the small business regulatory, it's SBRR something.
Yeah.
I think I cut off. But, and so the public can weigh in on that also, as far as what the rules are. Once they've established the rules, parks, now, parks is one, the county's one that's going to have to take possession of this process. Once the admin rules are completed, parks needs to go and identify suitable locations for the activities, farmers' market or artisans' market, to occur in a park without disrupting intended purpose, the intended purpose of the space. So they're not going to pick Badina Stadium, KIF Night, or anything like that, or, you know, things like that. Parks is going to have to identify and say, this is where we think a farmers' market or artisans' market one will work at our parks and not disrupt any of the intended other activities going around it. Once they've identified that location, then Parks is going to have to send out a notification to landowners of record within three hundred free total parcel boundary, within thirty days, they're going to receive if they have objections or not. If they don't have over fifty percent objections, then Parks has, is going to do, can do the class one, is still going to have to do the class one zoning permit, just like private property owners. And if the class one zoning permit passes, Parks also has to request for a proposal. So Parks Department will have to prepare a RFP for a competitive seal bid following HRS chapter one oh two to award a vendor permit to conduct an ongoing market in the area. So if I said, hey, Pat, I want to do a farmers' market at this park, and Pat says, I think a farmers' market, I don't care who you are, but I think a farmers' market at this park is a great thing, and it works with all the uses, they go through that whole thing, and still, at the end of the day, they go for RFP, so I'm not the only one that can apply for it. Parks is going to get an RFP from everybody that's going to do it, and then Parks decides who's going to be the main vendor that does it. And they follow the state, state rules on that. So it's a very long process.
So, and please jump in, anybody else. And I guess I have so many questions, because this is a big thing in the nineties, this is not a new challenge. So I appreciate all the work that you've done. So we don't have parks here, but can anybody that's right here give us the amount of time that Spouting Horn has been in this small business regulatory review board process? Because I remember, you know, we spent a lot of money to build that concession piece there. How long has it taken so far and it's not finished?
So funny that you mention, Spouting Horn rules will be signed today, but it's taken quite some time. And as Councilmember Conishiro was speaking, I'm calculating in my head that process will be anywhere from, it could be six months to eighteen months to go through that process conservatively.
So Spouting Horn has been in that process for like three or four years, is that correct?
I think there was some issue related to COVID and the build out of the spaces. I wasn't working on that directly, but there were other reasons why it took quite some time.
And the reason I bring that up is because, in speaking to the room, the people who worked there, who had their concessions there, had had it for years, like six to seven days a week. So it was a very big part of what was their family dynamic. So I had a lot of complaints at that time. So it's been, I would say, conservatively speaking, three years. So when we say six to eight months, is that the case because they're going to use the same rules and regulations that went for Spouting Horn?
No, because Spouting Horn is regulated separately, so they would have to enter into a new rulemaking process for this program.
So I believe, and unfortunately, Parks isn't here, I believe in our meeting that he said it went through three public hearings with the Small Business Regulatory Review Board. Do you remember if that's correct? Two? Okay, two. And did it ever have to go through anything locally here? Like what I don't see here is any kind of public notice, because three hundred feet isn't very far. That's a hundred yards, and so the congestion it might make for business or impacts, that's not very far. So is there any kind of requirement for public notice, like in the papers?
Yes.
What is that public notice and where is that stated?
It's HRS chapter ninety-one, and it's a public hearing for the rules themselves. We conducted that for Spouting Horn. We had one person come.
You had one person come, which means it's not, the notice is
It was published.
It is published, but we have a legal fiction. People don't even look at the, the back of the Garden Island printed paper anymore. We, you know, people don't see it. If one person came for something that important, it wasn't seen. So that's a little bit of my concern, you know? So if we don't have that, if there isn't somebody who's willing to sit in a hot seat like myself and just say, hey, everybody, both sides, everybody, we want to hear from you. So we don't have that there, basically. We're just putting it, public notices, putting something in the back of the newspaper, in the classifieds?
Sorry, for Spouting Horn, it did go through the use permit process, because
Mr. Chair, I think Spouting Horn is not relevant to this discussion, because this, Spouting Horn does not, this bill does not impact Spouting Horn. I'm sorry, I would just keep the discussion through this bill, because that is what was posted. The Spouting Horn issue is a completely separate issue and
I'll take that back, Ben. I just was asked, Mike. I'll take that back, because I was just asking, because for those vendors that were adamantly communicating with me painfully, tearfully, it was a very long time. So I'm simply asking, because that's my experience, that it was a very long time. So I'm just, I'm just wanting, it's my responsibility to be clear on what we're having right here. So you're saying six to eight months, we've never done it before, but we'll try it, maybe because these rules are somewhat
Again, Mr. Chair, she's referencing Spouting Horn.
How am I referencing, is that, I'm talking about
That is irrelevant to the discussion. And the reason I bring it up is because the public watches and they get confused. The, she said six to eighteen months, that was for
I said six to eight. Did you say six to eight?
She said six to eighteen months.
To go through the entire process, including the HRS one oh two bid, it could be six to eighteen months.
Sixteen, I can't hear you.
Judging from the number of people who are in the room right now, I'm sure that folks are going to be watching for the public notice and want to participate in that process.
Well, they aren't going to have to do it, though, right? Well, they aren't gonna have to do it though, right?
Well, you were asking about a public hearing.
But this, if this is for public parks, these guys won't have to.
If they wanna open a market there, they would possibly be interested. I'm not sure who an applicant would be.
At a public park?
Yeah. It applies to public parks.
Okay, sixteen to eighteen months. Six, I can't, I can't hear it. Six, six to eighteen months, is that correct? S I X, no teen, six to eighteen months. Okay. I have a lot more questions, but we can go to the next piece.
Okay, we're getting used to the mics. Anytime the screen changes, our mic turns off. So we'll, we'll just watch each other and make sure. If the screen changes back to us, then our mic's gonna go off again. So I thought I was losing it because I was like, I swear I didn't push it off, but it's red again. So, um, okay, so that's farmers market one and ours market one first on state and county property, which we understand it's gonna take a very long time to do and cannot get done right away because the first step is Parks Department is gonna have to do admin rules for them. Um, event concessions on state and county park facilities or state department of education facilities falls under Parks Department's special use permit process, which they have in place now, and nothing is gonna change with that process. So, um, they're just gonna go through the same process on it. Right now, based on the zoning, it's technically not allowed to do some of these activities on the county or, on the county property. And so, um, this bill basically allows you to do it. And the process stays the same. These are events, one-off events, like Koi Hospice, Fourth of July Celebration, Harvest Festival, H L T A Charity Walk, KIF Events, events that are at county parks. So no change in the current process on how Parks is gonna process those type of one-off events.
I have another question. I have another question. The rules, whatever they are, is it gonna be that each different park has a different set of rules? Or we're gonna have the same set of rules for any of the parks that we're looking at? Of the county parks?
Under the bill, the same rules apply, but for a separate and follow-up process, should this bill be adopted, the Parks Department would have to determine whether or not they would have specific rules park by park or whether or not they do blanket rules across the board for Parks.
And when are they gonna make that determination?
They would, you know, they'd have to assess that should this bill pass.
Okay, and then I have another question, if that's okay? Because where I have the deepest concern is the beach parks. As I've said many times, having been a retailer, you do better to go to where the market is than to ask the market to come there. And Princeville Park is right on the pathway of the market. So the beach parks, if somebody was lucky enough to be at Poipu Beach Park or at Blackpot Park or maybe, um, you know, some right there at Keikaha, right on the water. Somebody was lucky enough to do that.
Sorry, council member, when you say somebody, are you talking about a single person?
No, meaning a, a market. If a market, thank you for that correction. If a market was lucky enough to have that, that's where the business is gonna be. That's where you wanna be because the market is already right there. So I wanna ask about the SMA.
Yeah, I can say, council member, that, um, this bill doesn't override special management area laws. And so special management area laws, regardless of this bill passing, if this bill were passed as is, any beach park area that wants to pursue a market would still have to get an SMA use permit and go before the planning commission for a public hearing. It will also necessitate, um, more than likely a HRS three forty-three review document, which is gonna be anywhere from half a million to a million dollars per park. I, I, I can't see, and I know the Parks Director isn't here, but I can't see Parks even beginning to look at the idea of pursuing markets regardless of this bill adopting in a coastal beach park.
Even in a different administration?
Like I said, it would take, I mean, potentially, but it still has an SMA use permit process, which is going to take, and from the environmental studies and assessment required as part of it, it would take a minimum of three to five years for the studies and application to be put together. And again, anywhere between right now, half a million to a million in studies just to apply for that permit. So I can't say, I can't speak for the next administration, but this bill would have, I think, very little bearing on whether or not an administration decides to move forward on a market one in a coastal beach park.
And then, thank you, that's good to know. And then in a coastal beach park like right now, we definitely have some stuff that goes on down there, right? Um, and conceivably, it's gonna continue. We will learn more about it when we look at the, um, event concessions. By the way, I'm not opposed to the event concessions. But so, um, I guess what I'm looking at is that there hasn't been, this comes back to enforcement. Sometime today, I wanna hear about enforcement because there isn't necessarily enforcement in the beach parks and we're understaffed. So, or anywhere really, it's, it's light, you know? We, we, we have bigger problems than somebody selling a taco, right? So, um, at some point today, I'm gonna wanna hear about how we do enforcement because I would say right now, an SMA, can you give me the acronym, what that means?
Special Management Area.
Okay, I have that right. Somebody said it's shoreline management area, so special management area. So right now, we don't have deep enforcement on that, but they've been lightweight violators.
I'll, I'll have to say that there's two levels of enforcement that comes to county parks. You have the actual Parks Department enforcement staff enforcing who's in their parks. And then you have the Planning Department Special Management Area Enforcement Section. I've said this before and counsel many times before. Outside, our vacation rental enforcement program, we are actively looking for violators. Outside of the illegal vacation rental industry, our staff doesn't allow us to actively look for violations of SMA laws and zoning laws. But we are complaint based. And so if we get a complaint on one of these operations, that is, say, in the park, we do investigate it. And that notice of violation won't go to the vendor, it has to go to the property owner, so it goes to the Parks Department. So, um, I am aware of, of the potential for vendors to be operating in some areas that don't actually have the zoning permits. If we get a violation complaint, we, we will inspect it.
Okay, so I have, bear with me, please. Thank you so much. And do you have another, do you have a question? Do you have a question? I have a question. So when we look at special management area, um, policy, that's county or county and state?
It's actually a state law that the county implements.
The state law that the county what?
It's a federal pro, it's a federal program that there's a state law, the special management area law on HRS two oh five A, that the county implements on behalf of the state.
So did I understand you correctly when we recently spoke that we are going to be updating our SMA ordinance? I thought I heard you heard the word ordinance, not statute.
Administrative rules. So there's administrative rules for us to implement that state law. And we are in the current, we're currently in the process of drafting an update, a comprehensive update to the SMA administrative rules.
And so when are we likely to see that?
We anticipate the draft having final internal review, um, at the end of June. So we hope to have it at a public hearing in August and later than September.
Okay. That's my question.
Any, any more questions on the amendment?
Well, yeah, he's gonna go over event concessions.
Oh, I already went over event concessions. There's no change in the process.
There's no change in the process. It's legalized, is it? Okay. All right.
Anything else from our members? Okay, if not, all right. So if there's no further questions on that, um, like to, while the rules are suspended, we're good. Um, is there anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience wanting to provide testimony?
On the amendment.
On the amendment.
So right now, the motion on the floor is the amendment only. So that would be the testimony would be on the amendment only. If anyone has discussed or has testimony on this specific amendment.
Right.
Okay, none?
If there's no one, then we.
Call a meeting back to order.
Meeting back to order.
Final discussion and then we can vote.
Final discussion, members?
Yeah, so hopefully, I, hopefully clarified, it is a big amendment, but a lot of it was housekeeping. And I know we're in a weird predicament where we only have three members of the committee. Um, usually there's a lot more flexibility. I think at this point, we, for any amendment to pass, you need three votes to move forward. And I'm just hoping, you know, this is a housekeeping amendment and it does take into consideration what the community wanted, which was more input from the neighbor, from the neighbors. So, um, I'm hoping that we can get this amendment to pass unanimously. If not, we'll probably have to come back with amendment another time when we have more members, which is kinda weird, but it is what it is.
Any other, any other, council member?
Um, yeah, I just wanna thank council member Konashiro and our staff and Planning Department for working with us all the, literally all the way up till eight o'clock this morning, or eight twenty-nine maybe, um, to try to finalize this change and just to incorporate that additional community input, which is valuable. I think, thank you.
Likewise, you know, I, I did have a lot of concerns, you know? I, I wish Santanla would allow us to see amendments because then I, I wouldn't have spent so much doggone time over the last week stressing out about this thing, you know? I really appreciate the work that was done. I think the biggest concern I heard from the few opponents of the bill was the community process, the community input, and this covers that. So I'm, I'm very happy about that. I, I too have an amendment, but my amendment will, depending on the outcome of this vote, and I agree, I hope, I hope we can get this out today, uh, this amendment. Uh, my amendment will have to change. So if, if this passes, then I'll ask for a quick recess so we can, uh, adjust this. But there's one more change. Yeah, sorry. Janelle is so efficient.
She's on it.
She's so efficient. She's like Chat GPT.
Better, better.
Better, better, better. So, uh, yeah, I hope we can get this moved. Um, if it doesn't pass, then my amendment, I would still introduce amendment as it is written. And then we'll take it from there. So thank you. Thank you all for showing up.
Yeah, and again, thank everybody for showing up, all the hard work that has been put on the table today and shared with you folks, went through all the different areas of this discussion. And I think we're on the right track to make sure that we move forward. So thank you for all the discussion. So members, um, at this time, can I get a roll call vote?
This is a roll call vote on floor amendment number one. Council members Cowden.
Aye.
Konashiro.
Aye.
Presiding Officer Carvalho.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Five minutes. Can I have five minute recess at this time? So you can leave me. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to call our meeting back to order at this time. I'd like to open up to Chair Raposo.
Ca- thank you. Um I do have an amendment, and again, Mr. Konashiro's amendment that passed uh covered a bunch of my concerns, so uh we had to change my amendment. But I do have one amendment because, you know, I I look at farmers markets, artisan markets as places where local farmers and artisans can go to to sell their products. And so I have an amendment. I wanted to do a real quick presentation first, a very quick PowerPoint, just to um talk a little bit about the history of of uh farmers markets. So I, can we?
Move to a man as circulated.
Oh, I I'll, I, okay, you can do it now. You can do it now.
Oh.
Go ahead.
Seven.
Okay, go ahead. You can pass it out. So, real quick, um I just put this PowerPoint together just to, number one, educate myself uh on the history and how farmers markets. So if we can get the PowerPoint up. It's gonna take some time to get used to these mics. Um okay, you can go to the first slide. So farmers markets. We're all learning today, guys. You can just push the, yeah, just, just, I don't even, just, okay, there we go. So the primary intention of farmers markets is to support local agriculture, and we'll get into artisans later, uh by giving small-scale farmers a space to sell directly to the public. Obviously, the benefits, fresh seasonal, often organic produce, fewer middlemen, so farmers keep more profit. Consumers get to know who grows their food and strengthens local economies. I think we all heard many examples of that at the last, at the public hearing, and it is vital. Um next slide. Why outdoors? Obviously, fresh air, light. It's just healthier. Uh you don't need refrigeration. And I like this. Sunshine also, uh sunshine also symbolize transparency and health are aligning uh with the idea of fresh and wholesome food. And that's what farmers markets are. That's what they are, regardless of which one you go to. Uh next slide. Real quick, I'm not going through all of these, but it just started back centuries ago in Egypt. Um town squares in medieval Europe, uh and then in the seventeenth century, you know, in in our own, in Boston and Hartford, New York City. Markets became very, very popular and and it was based on the same premise that the local farmers were able to bring their goods and not have to deal with wholesalers and middlemen and and be able to keep a lot of the profit. Next slide. Late nineteen, early twentieth century, we had some issues, right? Urban expansion, the the growth of cities just went crazy. Uh people started moving out and farther away from these markets. Uh supermarkets became very popular. Everyone went to supermarkets and and basically the the farmers market started, market started to decline. Um in the thirties and forties, of of course, the depression um started to re-kick or re-kick, yeah, kickstart the the farmers markets again, because again, it was very expensive and and money was tight. And then from the seventies till now, when you look at how our country is going or has gone in in the last few decades, uh health and sustainability movements, everyone wants to be healthy. And and I think farmers market is is uh where that that is so emphasized. Uh legislative support, you see more and more legislation at the national level, state level, and even county levels that supports these types of operations. And again, that's why we're here today. We're here today to to propose legislation that's going to hopefully help the the farmers market industry. Um by the nineties, the number of farmers markets in the U.S. had increased significantly, again, showing their popularity. Um it's all over the globe. And farmers markets have become integral to communities globally, supporting local economies and providing fresh, uh locally sourced pro- products. That's exactly what uh this has done. Now, how does artisans fit into the markets? Shared values, right? Artisans and farmers, they got the same values and and uh emphasizing local production and sustainability. That's what we should be focusing on. That was the intent of farmers markets. Uh markets support the buy local ethos, where whether it's fresh vegetables or handmade soaps. It's buying local. That's what we want to do with farmers markets. Uh economic benefit, in including artisans, help attract a wider audience, increase, increasing the foot traffic. So when you add the artisan market to the farmers market, you just basically increase your your traffic. And everybody benefits, both artisans and farmers. Um it provides low overhead retail space because you don't have the overhead of opening up a brick and mortar, and and I so appreciate that. Um artisans add cultural richness, richness as, again, you folks live that uh when you do your your markets. Uh and they and they turn the market into a social and creative experience. I think we had non-market owners speak, we had market owners talk about. And you just see the genuineness of and the sincerity of when they said how much fun they had meeting people from all over the world. Uh and that's what farmers markets were intended to be. So common artisan products found that farmers markets, of course, homemade candies. I have to go through all of this. You guys know, you guys live it. My focus is on the last paragraph on here, is most market organizers do set guidelines, and for example, items must be handmade and locally produced. This is where I, it's where I draw the line. I mean, my support is contingent on the products being local. Eh absolutely. I know markets, they have, you know, they have trinkets and all kinds of goody goodies. For me, if, when we're talking about this bill, when we're talking about farmers markets and artisan markets that we are talking about with this bill, I'm not talking about the events, I'm not talking about the hap- the the hospice. Those come under a special use permit, they go see the county, they say, hey, we plan on having a vendor tent that's gonna have everything. I, that does not bother me, because it's not a farmers market. That that's a concession stand. That's a, that's a craft fair. That's different. We are dealing with farmers markets, artisan markets, and for me, my support directly hinges on whether or not we limit the products and services sold to local, period. And I I I apologize if some of you have imported stuff, but to me, when we're looking at the the preservation of our our parks and our our space, uh it needs to be local. That's just for me. So with that, my amendment um as circulated, basically just says that all, all items have to be handcrafted. Uh obviously, the farmer, farmer, you gotta grow it here. You cannot go Costco, buy pineapples, and sell them at the farmers market. You cannot do that. Oops, sorry. Um uh but everything else has to be handcrafted by the artisan themselves. And uh i- if you're using, if you're, if you're, I I like the idea of the curated Hawaiian vintage products because I think that has a place because of the culture aspect, as we just talked about, and and the uh why it's so appealing. Um but those products have to be made, it has to be true Hawaiian vintage product. It cannot be a uh California-made uh painting of a Hawaiian palm tree. Uh that's not vintage Hawaiian product. So that's my amendment. I hope I can get the support. I think it's critical, folks, because this bill could potentially open up markets, which is not a bad thing. I think markets are good. I think, I think farmers markets are 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 excellent for for our communities. But we need to be very careful that we don't provide a platform where it can be abused, so you're just creating public spaces for business people that are selling non-local products and non-local foods and non-local services basically on the backs of the taxpayers who pay for that park. Private property, you do what you want, but my main concern is our park space. And if we're gonna be allowing our tax, uh our county-owned property to be used for these markets, then I I believe that it needs to be specifically for local products and services and foods and stuff like that. So that that's.
So members, are there any questions on the amendment?
Yeah, I have a question. When you're saying. I have a question. Thank you for your work. I appreciate the intention of what you're saying. When you're saying private doesn't matter, is this somewhere here where, because I see right in here, still referencing community use facility. So are you saying at a community use facility, everything has to be locally made in the artisans?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so just, if you will allow me, like this, I bought at the Kekeha Fun Man, or Fun Day. And is handmade, you know, with machines, but I mean, from.
Before you go on, again, as I said, on the events, I don't have a problem. Hospice, Kekeha Fun Days, I don't have a problem. If you're labeling yourself as a farmers market, then it needs to be local. That that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
So at the events, as I stated, you go apply for your permit, and you telling the county, I'm gonna have a vendor booth, I'm gonna have a craft fair, I'm gonna have, and I'm gonna open it to whatever anybody wants to sell. Uh I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
But if you're gonna, if you're gonna market your product under this bill, which governs specifically farmers markets and artisan markets, then then that's where it would apply.
Okay, so this, I bought in a store, but this is handmade. I bought, I think, lace it up, you know, the boot store in Kapaa. The dress I'm wearing, these couple of dresses, these are often the signature things and shirts. These are in the events, right? We see them in the events. So you're saying it's fine in the events? It would be the ongoing market. So that would, that would then include um the Princeville Market. We wouldn't have, say, cards or dresses or sarongs or things like that. We wouldn't have that.
As long as it was made by an artisan here on Kauai.
So something like this wouldn't be. If they're made in China, like almost.
It's, I mean, it's very plain. It's, it's, your item has to be made on Kauai. It has to be handcrafted by the artisan. That's what it says.
They, they're with their sewing machine.
That that's what the bill says.
Okay.
Because again, that was the intent of farmers markets. Farmers markets wasn't to provide business people to sell whatever they wanted to at a, at a, at a cheaper rate. It it wasn't. It was really to connect the communities to these farmers and these artisans, uh and they, so they didn't have to pay these large overheads. But also uh give them an opportunity to sell their wares. So that that's, that's my vision of a farmers market.
What, and an artisan market?
And artisan market.
Um, okay, I have thoughts, but I can, does anybody else have a question?
No, this, this is only for artisan markets, yeah, Bill? Yeah, not for farmers market?
Well, it's already, the farmers market already spelled out in the bill.
Yeah.
There's very clear, the language that's in the original bill was very clear, that it had to be locally produced foods.
Yeah, I guess for me, um it's not a question. I guess I'd love to hear public testimony on it, because I'm not exactly sure how it affects the current markets, if, I don't know, if it does affect it or not, is.
Yeah, I I mean, again, remember now, remember, as I said, this bill isn't a Princeville Market bill. This bill is a bill that's gonna be the law for every single park on the island. That's how I look at it. I don't look at it, I, Princeville runs the market well. I I I, but this is not about Princeville. This is about all parks, should this bill pass. And I wanna make sure we're not just providing space for trinkets in in a county park. I don't. I don't. I mean, I, I, trust me. I, in our meeting with planning in parks last week, I I, I actually designed my stuff. I sell trinkets online. I sell coffee mugs and shirts. I design the designs. I make the designs in my computer. Not a very good artist, but AI helps out a lot. And then I send the design away and someone prints it on a cup from China at a very low cost, and then I sell it online. You guys should visit my store. I'm not gonna promote it. But that item is not, is, I didn't make the mug. If I made a coffee mug at home and I designed, and I made it with pottery and and clay, and then I, then then that's my product. But I just, I just designed the design. I don't feel I should be at a farmers market, artisan market, selling that, not in a county park. I don't. So that's just, this is me. It's just, I am very traditional when it relates to farmers market, because the, as as you, as I read through that PowerPoint, that was what farmers markets were designed for, for the person that grew the food or made the product, to have a place to to sell it without having to deal with a middleman. That that's how I continue to see it, so.
Um members, any questions for the question?
Yeah, I guess I do wanna hear from the public, because I don't know, for me, I don't know all the different types of products that are at the market, and this is for an art, artist, artisans market, you know, I'm I'm not exactly sure where you draw the line on like, say, someone designed, oh, like the brand, um, can, I think, was like someone from Kauai that came up with a brand, but the shirts are produced probably not on Kauai or something, or or I'm just trying to understand where that line is.
Well, the line is very simple. Like, it says in the bill, it has to be handmade, handcrafted by the artisan. So if if, yeah, if your, if your clothes are being made in somewhere else, then then it wouldn't, it wouldn't apply.
And I guess for me, I I think there's some economic efficiencies to get it produced somewhere else. Some, I think, uh vendors aren't able to produce a shirt, you know, and at a reasonable cost on Kauai. Trying to think, I know my wife just bought like this top from, I don't even wanna say the name on the brand, I don't know. But it's a local guys that had like a patterned shirt, but I don't think they made the shirt here. I think they designed a pattern, but then they probably sent it off somewhere. It's like a, almost like a um surf, surf, like bathing suit type of material. So I don't know how they would create it here. So I'm trying to like, understand like that line. It's like a product that they're producing, creating, you you know, it looks very um floral and Hawaiian, but it may not have necessarily been um made on Kauai.
Yeah, and then for me, again, it's just my opinion, and that should be sold in a store. That should be sold in a store. If I bought a thousand T-shirts from a manufacturer and I had it sent here and I'm making the shirts here, I'm printing the shirts. If I bought a thousand T-shirts from a manufacturer, and I had it sent here, and I'm making the shirts here, I'm printing the shirts here, I'm embroidering the shirts here, uh, that's a different story. But if you're just creating a design and sending them off, then, and, uh, getting it printed like my mug, I, I don't think that it should be at a farmer's market or artisan's market. I just don't. I think that, that is reserved for the artisans that truly created the product. But, it's, you know, again, it really, I, I do wanna hear from them, but, um, that's my vision of, of a farmer's market, and, you know, you're not gonna hurt my feelings if you don't support it, but, uh, I wanna keep this farmer's market, artisan market concept as it was intentionally created for. That's all. Because once you open this box, then you will see more markets popping up with people like me, who can send a, a design to a, a Chinese printer, and, and I'm getting these things very cheap and making a lot of money, where with that, with the profit I can make off of the, that's, that system, I should be able to afford a shop. And that's, again, maybe not popular, but that's my, I'm a traditional kinda guy.
Good. Councilmember Holly?
Yeah, so I think, um, I wanna be clear here a little bit and address the farmer's markets and the artisans a little different. When it comes to farmer's markets, I'm a hundred percent with you. I think that there's a great concern in the community that people are actually purchasing stuff at Costco and selling them at farmer's markets, and that's atrocious. I think it's the exact opposite, like you said. When it comes to artisan's markets, I think it is kinda nuanced, like, because we don't have any shirts made on Kauai, but we do have a local printer that I love, and I use him all the time. Um, so like, that kinda, if, if the, if the design is designed on Kauai, and he prints the shirts on Kauai, but obviously nobody makes shirts on Kauai, so they would have to be shipped in from somewhere. So I think it, it kinda reminds me of when I was hosting the I Pono Eat Local Challenge, because we would struggle, because there's certain products that are just not available, like oils and made on Kauai, um, so we'd have to make a little exception of like ninety percent local food for a dish, um, because really, there's just certain things that are hard to get here. So I totally agree. I think, um, around food, I think it's, it's critical in the farmer's market, and I think, I totally agree, like, printing cups in China, selling them at the market. I just think it, it starts to become tedious around stuff like the printed shirts. Um, I also, I also appreciate that the market, kind of, the market, kinda controls itself in the sense of there's a lot of people waiting for vendor places, and I think, kind of, um, if somebody, like, if somebody sees that somebody's selling stuff that's cheap, I think they would report it to the market manager, or, you know, and say like, look, there's this huge line of people that hand-sew their purses or whatever here on Kauai. Um, why is this guy selling whatever? So I kind of see that as a market, but overall, I mean, I agree that the bulk of it needs to be made here. I just, like, a hundred percent made is, is really hard for people, because we make so little here when it comes to product, like, even if you, even if you have like shells and coconut that you're making, like a turtle out of or something, I don't know, just using example, the glue's not gonna be made here. The, there's some, there's always gonna be certain things, so I think made in Hawaii is important, and it kind of almost allows a little flexibility in that definition, because it doesn't say like hundred percent every single aspect of it. So to me, it's, it's clear.
The, the vin- the vintage.
Yeah.
Yeah, but all other products would be required.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I, I honestly don't see the difference between a piece of, uh, uh, an item, an artisan item versus a farmer's item. I mean, what's the difference? If you're requiring the farmer to produce the item on Kauai, why wouldn't you expect the same from the artisan? Why would you not say, oh, you know, it's so hard to get strawberries on Kauai? So I gotta fly them in. I mean, what's the difference? I don't see the difference. If you, if, if you're, again, the concept of a farmer's market was to put the farmer in front of the customer. And that should apply to the artisan as well. And if the artisan is, is not a, is not handcrafting their item, and they're not making that item, then it should not be an artisan market, as far as I'm concerned.
Good. Councilmember Polly?
Well, since we're allowing discussion, um, I think both points are, are really, really valid. So where I wanna support what the chair is saying, um, when, when you hear me a number of times saying, any place can start to look like a mercado, you could have it if it's all the time. If you can get the items in and have the volume, the only way to do what he's saying is you have very little volume, right? It's expensive and you don't have much volume. If you're sitting at your sewing machine and you're sewing the dress, I would assume maybe you can buy the fabric, or do you have to print the fabric? And I was somebody who would go to Bali or whatever and pick out the, the designs and pick out the fabric and put it all together. Even that's not that easy, right? Certainly easier than doing it at home. If you do it at home, here, consider Kauai is what we're talking about, if those items are gonna cost a lot, so everything in the artisan's market, to be able to make it work for them, are really expensive. So for the person who's worried about the beach parks being filled with little dresses, your amendment is an excellent amendment, because it's not gonna be worth it. You can't do the volume, you can't make it work. I also wanna hear from the people, because, um, I know when I go to these artisan pieces, honestly don't have that much money. So it's easier for me to buy a little dress than it is for me to buy a hundred and fifty dollar hat, or this was like, I don't know, a hundred and fifty dollars too, you know, for some little, little thing. I wanted another one, but it was too much, right? So I, I buy the, because I like to support the market. Honestly, I'm there to support the market regardless of what people might think of me. So, um, to be able to do the kind of volume in a busy place, to do it by hand, is near impossible. So by approving this, it's a way to keep things out of the beach parks, right? I get that. Um, I wanna hear from people. The other thing I think about is enforcement. When I go to farmer's markets, I can, because I'm, I'm in the whole permaculture crowd and organic food crowd, I can usually tell from looking at something that it's not locally grown, just by the shape of, of the particular piece. I was at farmer's markets on the Big Island recently, and they had garlic. Maybe there's places they can grow it, because it's a higher mountain there, but it looked like volume garlic that was purchased. But how do you enforce it? Who comes around? Do we send the Parks Department down there, or the Planning Department down there to say, can I please see your dress? You know, you can easily cut out the made in China, uh, label, but it's an enforcement issue. It's like when we had a rule against, um, plastic containers in parks. Who are we gonna send down there? Or smoking in parks, who are we gonna send down there? Do we call the police, hey, this person's got a water bottle? This person has that, you know, um, a plastic Coke bottle? These aren't easy to enforce. So they are difficult things to put in place. So it's an intention, but I don't know if it is, but though, I guess where you could enforce it is that the, um, the Parks Department, or if it goes to some sort of special, uh.
It'd be a code violation. It would be planning, planning, and I, and let me just say, planning, the enforcement of planning, they, like you already said, is complaint-driven, but in my experience, they're excellent. Whenever we get constituent, we are here today because of a constituent complaint that was forwarded to planning. Planning does an excellent job with enforcing complaints. So I'm not concerned about that. I mean, it's, it's whether or not you'll get a complaint. If, if we have a complaint, if you don't have a complaint, whatever, you know.
Well, then you have community division. There's so many complaints that were out there, that it took one person to go to planning, and then that person took all the heat. Um, I heard a lot of the complaints, so it's not that there weren't those complaints. And the reason why I'm hearing it more isn't because of my demographic, it's because I've lived on the North Shore for forty-one years. So I know people. I was the president of the North Shore Business Council. I was a business person. Um, I have more of a relationship with the North Shore. I think that's why I heard it. So this isn't an easy one. So, um, I think I would, if somebody wants to, to, um, talk, I would like to hear from, um, a market organizer or people that they find, because again, as a, speaking as a former retailer, your tenant mix makes all the difference in the world. If you're, if you're a retail business that's near a great restaurant, that has another anchor tenant of a grocery store, you're gonna get the volume that you wouldn't get if it was a narrow group of people. If you have a paint store next to you, or you're not gonna maybe have somebody come eat your food just because there's a paint store. So I would like to hear from the public if there's anybody who wants to speak.
Let me, let me just think of real quick, Holly, because, you know, legislators, we, we create policy. We create policy. We, we do legislation. This bill is a bill on use. This is not an economic development bill. This is not a bill designed to stimulate the economy. This is to con- to basically control the uses of our parks. That is what this bill is about. And so, well, I don't wanna sound unsympathetic and, well, you know, sorry if you gotta bring your dresses in from wherever. This is not about Princeville. This is about the future, and that's what this, this is a very important bill. This bill i- is intended to protect and provide an opportunity to our farmers and, local farmers and local artisans. This bill is not to create business opportunities for the public. This is to make sure that, otherwise, we'd call it something else. This is a farmer's market bill. And we gotta be very careful, because when you open up Pandora's Box, you ain't gonna be able to close them. So I, I, I've been here long enough to see bad bills pass, and once it passes, you're done. So I'm just trying to be very cautious that what is the intent of this bill? Well, it's, it's an intent to provide our local farmers and local artisans an opportunity to sell their goods. This isn't an opportunity, or to create an opportunity for people to go out there and start importing items and selling at farmers or artisan markets. That, that's, again, it's just a, it's just philosophical difference, maybe.
Councilmember Holly?
No, yeah, I, I agree with the, uh, intent of this, and I think, um, it, would it be possible to separate out this requirement uh, for our county parks, and, and therefore eliminating the things like Waipua, Princeville, some of those private that you say you're, you're not. I'm just wondering if that's possible. It just came to my mind.
That'd be a legal question.
Over here.
And a legal question. I don't expect her to answer on the fly.
Sorry, Laura, thank you.
Deputy County Attorney Laura Barzalai, um, I, I would probably have an issue with that.
Can I suspend the rules and have our attorney?
Sorry, councilmember.
Answer the question, sorry.
Uh, we might have an equal protection question that we'd have to look at with regard to dividing this bill in that manner.
Okay, thank you.
Good, thank you for that. Okay, call, meaning back to our, any other questions?
A lot of rules are so suspended, we should take public testimony, unless there's any other questions from the members.
Or, I just have one thing before we open up, that I totally, um, I like the overall intent. And I think, just to clarify, very simple terms, we get the T-shirts, council chair, from here, from away, but as long as it's designed, we're good.
It's gotta be handcrafted. It's gotta be made, the shirt itself.
So I think that's one of the bigger things that has been coming my way, is to look, in looking at this bill, and then, of course, we wanna hear from our, our community and see what they're thinking on the business side, so.
So clarification, you're saying just if you screen print a shirt here, then, then obviously.
Well, clarify.
That the shirt's not made here, right?
Right.
No.
But the shirt's made and printed here, and we do our local shirts. I mean, I, that's what I'm saying about like, the specific of what that looks like, because nobody makes shirts here, but.
So somebody brought up rash guards, I think it was you, so when you have nylon rash guards, or, um, so that would be the same thing? So if you put rash guards, or, you know, if you made the design and you printed the, the, the design on the side of the fin, is that made here?
I mean, I, I think the, personally, the way I interpret that is yes. Like, if I use fantasy shirts in Kapahai, my local printer for all my printing stuff, and I consider those shirts printed in, uh, you know, printed made, the design's made here, the print's made here. The organic cotton shirts that I order aren't, but.
How about my example of rash guards, or?
I mean, if they're printed on Kauai, it's made on Kauai.
If it's screen printed on Kauai, it's made on Kauai, and that's why I gave, I gave other examples, if it's.
Yeah, well, like jewelry, for example, like.
Again, though, remember, it's the, the person that made the shirt, made the print. You, you know, it's not, you cannot go and buy shirts from a printer. The fact that it's printed on Kauai and selling it, no, you have to be the one to, to print the shirt.
But, but that, it's, it's, like, that is just normal name drop effort, is you come up with art, and you can put it on a fin, you could put it on a rash guard, you could put it on a hat, you could put it on anything. When you do what I would call name drop or locally created stuff, that's, that's the norm for doing name drop pieces. So to, to, if you're gonna decide, okay, well, just T-shirts, but then you have to just look at name drop anything, because I don't see how you could go, well, it's the T-shirts, but it's not the dress, or maybe you get a dress like this, and then so you have it embroidered over here, so it has something, I mean.
Okay, let me, let me use another example. Like, um, my earrings made by my sister, a whole new experience. Um, black pearls are obviously from Tahiti. The shells are here, the string is not made on Kauai, but she makes them on Kauai. To me, that's locally made.
That's handcrafted. That's handcrafted. That, that's exactly what that is.
Yes, but a T-shirt isn't, so it's just, it's, it's a continuum. It's not an easy thing to look at.
If you're ordering shirts and you're printing them yourself and you're making them with your design, then that's locally made. I mean.
You know, we, we can sit here and go to a thousand scenarios. We can go through a thousand scenarios. You know, it's like, how do you know that pineapple came from Kauai?
Yeah.
How do you know? Oh, because number one, Dole label, or Maui Gold label? We are defining the policy. I think people understand the intent of the bill. It's to promote local products, local items. I mean, if somebody wants to go there and cheat, God bless you, go cheat. Go cheat. If you wanna go bring in cheap crap and sell them at the, there's a complaint, and you cannot prove that was handcrafted here, you're out. I mean, let's not create scenarios, because we'll be here all day. It, it's, I think, you understand the concept. I don't know, maybe, maybe it's not clear enough. Maybe we gotta go through and have a hundred bullet points. If you have a shirt, you need to, no, the concept is very simple. Handcrafted by the artisan. If it's not handcrafted by the artisan, it's not allowed.
Okay, I will accept what you're saying. It's not, to me, very simple at all. I'm in agreement with the earrings. It's, it's, it's really a slippery slope, really difficult to enforce. Who do we send down there to decide? So.
I said, planning. If there's a complaint, planning will go down.
Planning will go down.
In a private market, they're gonna go see the private market. The private market is fifty people in line, they'll just boot them in, put someone else in. I, our job is not to, we don't pass a bill, and, and not pass a bill because we're worried about enforcement. Enforcement has to be there. I think, uh, what Kaina was already here saying is complaint-based. It's complaint-based. They get a complaint, they'll investigate. Because it is a code. It's, 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 it's a, it's a code violation. It's a zoning violation.
Appreciate that, and again, that's why I brought it up, the design part, to, to me, it's already homemade, local, so, so. Anyway, uh, any other questions, uh, comments? Councilmember, it's not. While the rules are still suspended, is there anyone in the audience would like to come up and provide testimony? On this floor amendment, yes.
Oh, I don't know. Is it registered?
Can we do that?
Hold on, yeah.
Registered.
Okay.
Yeah, on floor amendment.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Push the button.
Press the button.
Good morning, thank you, um, for hearing this. I do appreciate, um, the intention of your amendment, and I just wanna speak, um, not on behalf of Princeville. This is artists across the island, artists across the state. If we just take, for example, the two biggest events that I'm aware of, uh, that take place on our island, we've got Merry Monarch, and we have the Made in Hawaii Festival. All of those, those events are filled with only items that are made in Hawaii. And made in Hawaii by their standards, which are the ones, the leaders in this market industry right there, that are the most esteemed, um, allow for the formula that it be designed in Hawaii by the artist. And that the majority of an item has to be made in Hawaii, meaning designed, is fully acceptable in those areas. And I, I give you this, we don't wanna penalize artists that cannot make T-shirts. Or, um, we have beautiful, beautiful photographers who capture the landscapes of our islands, and those do not get printed here. They have to send those away to get printed on canvas, to get printed on these metallic prints. Um, T-shirts, you know, Hawaii, let alone the United States, is not manufactured. So we lose that huge aspect of that part, that we don't produce much of anything anymore here. Um, but I do not think it would be in the best interest of artists who, some who have, are educated in art. Art, knowing from my own art, can take hours. I, I shared fourteen to twenty hours, some people longer. And it is their art, their craft. They're not in the, um, expertise of printing shirts, maybe. They're not in the expertise of embroidering, but yet, that is still true, made in Hawaii. But yet, that is still true, made in Hawaii, inspired by Hawaii art. So, well, maybe you go to ChatGPT on, on, for art. Yeah, many people around the state make their art with such love and passion. And we cannot discount that and not allow them to make a living off of that art, whether that be stamped somewhere else or printed somewhere else even. Even here, it's very hard to find a printer sometimes. Not all of that can be done. Stickers are not made here, even if you wanted to. I mean, you can get a, a cry cut or circuit. But again, it's like, if you're, if you're good at accounting and you're an accountant, you do that. But you're not gonna go and do all the other little mani mini tasks, you know? Let the artists do what they're best at and focus on it and still value that as made in Hawaii. Thank you.
Does Kaylee Nakamura want to speak on the floor amendment? Kaylee Nakamura followed by Lauren Taylor Davis.
Hi, I am Kaylee Nakamura. And I do really support the made in Hawaii, the made on Kauai by the artisans. But, and Desiree did make a really good point on not everything can be. And I just kind of want to point out, like, the county has already put into like a made on Kauai council or, they already have that. And it's not 100% because they understand that that's impossible. So it, it is, they focus on their majority. I believe designers can also get into the made in Hawaii program or the made on Kauai program. So I feel like just having some kind of maybe percentage, maybe verbiage saying bulk of items, it's like just to kind of make it a little more clear because it just seems like when you're saying it has to be fully made by the artisan, that that is accounting for 100% of that item, which is impossible. You would have, you wouldn't even actually have farmers because farmers need to use tools that are not produced on Kauai. They need to have hoses that are not produced on Kauai. There's, it's, nothing is gonna be 100%. And so it is like trying to find that finite line of what is good. But I do believe having the bulk made and produced by artisans on Kauai. Yes, I do support that. Thank you.
Lauren Taylor Davis followed by Erin Hoffman.
Is it okay? I'm gonna pass. Erin?
Erin Hoffman followed by Matthew Kivlin.
Okay. Hi, I'm Erin. And I kind of wasn't prepared to speak. But listening to all this, it got me thinking about the Made in Hawaii Festival that Desiree was talking about. And so I'm an artist here. Sorry, I'm kind of, I'm an artist here on Kauai. And my main products are Turkish towels. So Turkish towels. So I designed the product, I designed the artwork here. And then my designs are sent to Turkey. They're made on 100% organic Turkish cotton towels. There's absolutely no towel maker here in Hawaii. There's actually maybe one or two manufacturers of clothing on Oahu, like in Chinatown. And it's really hard to get into those manufacturers because they're so small. And, and they're not making Turkish towels. That's my niche. And I've actually flown to Turkey last September with my family. And we got to go to where all my products are actually made. And they are huge factories. There's nowhere in Hawaii that can, that can hold those kind of machines and that type of a product and make those, those kinds of products. It was a huge facility and they, the cotton's grown there. There, it's harvested there. They're dyed there with organic, eco-friendly dyes. It's all organically produced. But it's not made in Hawaii. But the thing is, I'm the one that designs them. It's my artwork. I've, I'm born and raised here. Like they're special to me. And people can feel that, like, that passion that's in my products because I love what I do. And I can't, like, I have three children. I don't like have time to like paint a canvas. I don't have that kind of space. I live in like a, you know, a three bed, two bedroom house, basically. There's five of us, you know? Like, I don't have that kind of a space. I had to find like my niche, what, which was, my niche, which was cotton Turkish towels. And, you know, like I said, there's, there's nowhere in Hawaii that, that manufactures clothing, except for one or two places in Chinatown. Now, back to made in Hawaii. I got accepted as an artist and vendor at Made in Hawaii last August. They have a calculation procedure that you have to go through. You have to fill out a couple of things for a few of your products. Yes.
Are you almost, or you, you wanna come back? Anybody else wanting to speak or you wanna finish?
I'm almost done.
Okay.
One second.
I'll give you, yeah.
One minute. So you have to have about 51% of your products made in Hawaii. And your time counts. So my stuff was over 51%. So maybe that's something that you guys want to consider in your bill or your amendment or whatever it's called. So, yeah, that's, that's really what I wanted to say. There's a calculation that says made in Hawaii, according to the top tier of made in Hawaii products and events.
Before you, before the next one comes up and speak, you know, people say sometimes going to talk to the councilmembers, no, 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 do nothing. They're not gonna listen. I, I'm prepared to just ask Ms. Carter to withdraw the amendment. And, and then we can move on. I heard enough. You know, it's, it's okay to, to change your mind on this table. But it makes sense. It makes sense. So I, I'll, if you would withdraw the motion in a second.
Oh, withdraw the motion.
Oh, you didn't motion, I'm sorry.
Withdraw the.
Just, okay, then we can move on.
Yes, please, moving on. Okay.
I have the amendment. I would like to start the later.
I would suggest we take a caption break.
Let's hold a caption break right now, regroup and then come back. Okay, we'll take a.
10 minutes.
Caption break, 10 minutes, caption break, and we'll be right back. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. And I understand there is another amendment from Councilmember. No, that's what I'm following what I'm supposed to do. So I understand there's another amendment by Councilmember Cowden. Councilmember Cowden?
Yes, I'd like to move to amend as certified.
Second.
Okay, oops. We gotta put our little lights on. Thank you. So my amendment is pretty simple, and so it will go up in a minute. And the intention of this is to separate out the community use facilities. Because as I said a little bit earlier, they all have governing boards to the most part. I mean, it might not be defined that way, but for the most part, they do. They have oftentimes the special permits. They have what's needed. And so my intention in this bill is to fast-track what is already working in the community use facilities. That will soon be defined if this passes as community use facilities. So that the goal would be that for markets that are agreed upon by the community. My understanding is from what Errol showed us, you're still gonna need to do this public notice to the 300 feet. So it's gonna be apparently up to 60 days, but that it won't take a lot longer than that. And... Okay, so if you look up there at the top, see it says findings and purpose. See the little yellow piece on those brackets? This is just taking out state and county parks, park areas. So it'll still, so it says, "The council finds that allowing farmers and artisans markets is appropriate within community use facilities." "The council also finds that it's appropriate to allow commercial concessions associated with park events, such as athletic games or meets, fairs, and concerts within state and county park areas. Therefore, the purpose of this ordinance is to effectuate these changes." So when I put this, it's kind of basically legalizing the status quo. And I consider the Princeville Market right now is the status quo. And if we're dishonest, only because you guys got a complaint did this come to our attention. And so I wanna pull that out because public parks has a primary purpose of recreation enjoyment by the public and also offering open space. We have specialized parks where they have a clear emphasis on sports. There's a lot of, lot of elements like that. I would think that we would probably get a lot more feedback on what happens to these private parks. I mean, the, the public parks, especially when we are knowing that the concessionaires and peddlers, peddlers and concessionaires, rules and regulations that we haven't seen yet, the special management area rules and regulations that I haven't seen yet, those are gonna take a longer period of time. And so this amendment that I have would allow what is happening now to be moving forward and be unimpacted by complaints. And so when I made this change, the change was really responding to what I was hearing from this community last time. And I appreciate what the chair had put forward in his amendment. Like, we have plenty of these one-off events all over the place. And so our smaller people who make the little items that I buy, I just bounce around and I buy them when I'm there, right? So I believe this, and we can ask the county attorney, won't adversely impact this particular process. And that what it will do is allow us to have more care for when we are looking at the rules and regulations for the other elements. Because we can just introduce a whole new bill that says for county parks and state parks, when we have those rules and regulations, basically structured. So Laura, or Ms. Barzalai, can I get a little bit of feedback on you from that?
At this time, I'd like to hold off and suspend the rules and open for discussion.
Okay.
Could you ask me a direct question?
Okay, the direct question is, when we take state and county park areas out and we leave community use facilities in, and that we also find it appropriate to allow commercial concessions associated with park events, such as athletic games or meets, fairs, concerts within state and county park areas, is that going to disrupt really any of what we have? Is it essentially grandfathering in our processes? It might only have one impact on Kapah, right? So what is, what would be your answer on that? That was a question I asked.
Well, there is no non-conforming process available here. So we're not grandfathering in, we just end up with non-compliant facilities that are already opening, that are already operating.
So which would that be? Would it be, I mean, like, would...
I think it would be more appropriate to ask that question to the Director of Parks and Recreation, but in my conversation with him, I know that we have an issue in Kapah.
That would be the only one. That's what I did ask him.
I wasn't there for that meeting, so I don't know. But there's no issue with the legality of, of what you're asking to be done. But I think that if you were to allow it in parks, it would give an opportunity to have tighter control on the markets than the control in the community use facilities, because it would be a county program.
So I'm not sure if I understood that. But like, if we put a new bill forward later to line up with the rules and regulations, and I can have planning come up also to... And I, I did ask this in meetings, but you weren't there. So I had planning and parks. Kaina, do you want to join her, please? So I guess my first question is, if this passed, would our community use facilities have any greater barrier than what we just passed in the, in amendment one? Would they have any greater barrier?
For community use facilities, I don't see that having any additional barriers with this amendment.
So with this amendment, they would be able to move forward quickly?
Correct.
It would be the most expedient process for them?
Well, it would be the same expedient process as the bill leaves out, correct?
Okay.
Because the facilities are treated differently.
Okay, and then, so I guess my challenge is, if the community, the, the state and county park areas, when I don't know what those rules and regulations are, I haven't seen them, I've asked, they're not prepared for either the SMA change or for the small business review. I forget, there's an extra, Regulatory Review Board?
There is no SMA change.
There will be, though. There will be an SMA change. Is that correct?
No.
Well, there's SMA rules that are being updated. There's no anticipation of those rules addressing farmers' markets or artisan markets in coastal parks.
So, but I haven't even seen what we're looking at in that, that SMA change. And so SMA changes would affect coastal parks, correct? The rules and regulations change for SMAs?
Yeah, but there's nothing in the SMA rule draft update that, that is concerned around artisan markets or farmers' markets.
I haven't seen it yet, though.
Okay.
Correct? I haven't seen it yet. I don't blind sign things. I don't blind approve things. I haven't seen it. I don't know if I'll be okay with it.
Okay.
Same thing with the rules and regulations for the peddlers and concessionaires. I haven't seen it. I don't blind sign.
Well, the reason why, Councilmember, that you haven't seen it yet is that the bill has to pass so that we can trigger the rulemaking process. And maybe if your true concern is with beach parks, maybe we could work with that language instead, if you're concerned about the SMA process. The SMA update, the rule updates relate to changes in the HRS that we've been working on for a couple of years. It's not related to this program.
The SMA requirements will...
SMA rules are gonna change.
Not for the markets and not for the artisan markets. There's, they're undergoing a change separately. But there's, there's still the requirement for the SMA in any coastal, and we're not taking that away in this bill.
Well, when I look at the SMA requirements, it's pretty minimal how the SMA requirements are even gonna protect those beach parks. It's really pretty minimal. It's just an element on the, the permit that says, on that SMA permit, it says, "Is it gonna hurt the community?" Well, that's a pretty, if you say, "Well, is it gonna bother 300 feet from that, that park?" If, I don't know what it is. I don't know what it is. So if we say, "Oh, if people are fine within 300 feet," when we know, for example, in Poipu or in Hanalei, you can't park if there's a funeral, if there's an event, anything. It's in front of people's houses. It's all around both, both sides of Vecay Road. These are high-impact things. And so I imagine that we're gonna have really important dialogue.
I completely agree, Councilmember. I just, again, to kind of go back to some of my previous statements, through the use permit process, and there will, if this bill passes, still be an SMA use permit process for farmers' markets in the, in the beach parks. With the use permit process in place, it, it, it takes, you know, three to five years, and possibly even longer if there's intervention, say seven to 10 years, for the Parks Department to even determine that they can move forward. And then they would start working on administrative rules. So knowing that, right, I can't imagine any Parks Director or future administration being like, "It's a five-to-10-year process to get the use permit and then start working on administrative rules." I can't imagine any administration really pursuing that five-to-10-year process for farmers' markets in beach parks. I don't wanna speak for our future administration, but it just, that's the process right now, given how lengthy it'll be. That five-to-10 years, and then to go through administrative rulemaking? I just, I, I don't, I wouldn't see it happening quite obviously, but there is a possibility.
Okay.
I have a follow-up question from Council Chair. Thank you. The SMA permit process is entirely separate and apart from this bill.
Correct.
So when you're talking about the process for the SMA, that's something that the county would have to, or the state would have to get prior to the, the request, the permit application even being submitted. I mean, because we went through this. I'm not going into specific. We went through this with a, with a county property, myself and Councilmember Kagawa. And the fact was, there was no SMA permit. And when we saw what it would take to create an SMA permit for that park, it was, it is not feasible. But my question is, because on the SMA permit, that's, it runs its own track. And it has all the archaeological, environmental processes in place. But the Class 1 zoning permit, that, when does that occur? Does that, you cannot do the Class 1 zoning permit without the SMA permit, right?
They would run simultaneous, but the Class 1 wouldn't be approved until that's...
Correct. So you, the Class 1 permit would be submitted, and then it's there until the SMA permit gets approved. Now, in the SMA permit, there's opportunities for community input, several.
Correct.
And if the community in that area, as described by Ms. Cowden, was gonna be impacted negatively and they came out and spoke, then more than likely, the SMA permit would be denied, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I am really uncomfortable. I haven't gotten enough answers yet to make me feel like we won't be at high risk of problems. I think part of that is, I went through the whole boating controversy. It was incredibly divisive. When I hear with the, the rules and regulations for the peddlers and concessionaires, that there would be one permit, I go, oh, that's gonna be a hard fight. That's gonna be a lot of problems. Now, it's not gonna affect the, the private, I mean, what are we calling it, community use facilities, right? It's not gonna affect them. But when we have a hard fight on this other piece, we'll go through all this division again. And when we say this is complaint-driven, people are afraid to complain. And when you complain, especially in the time of social media, there are very fierce and active responses that are mean-spirited and inaccurate. And that, you know, we live in a time of cyberbullying. And so when you see what could happen down in a place like that, we had probably a decade of fighting in Hanalei. And I, I worry about approving something right now that can be opening that up. Because here, here's another question. What I don't see in our First Amendment, where we would be looking at having a, this is with the rules and regulations, I don't see where we would be having, when we have one, we're, we're being told right now, it's not even written in here, but that we would have one applicant. We don't know how, how short or how long, what would make them not be able to do it. I mean, there is so much. And rules and regulations doesn't have to go before council, correct?
The administrative rules do not.
They are administrative rules. So council, this is our only opportunity to be able to affect that.
Sorry, I apologize. The administrative rules would not go before council. But the overall SMA program, if we're talking about the potential of eventually being ministerial, over-the-counter, the way that much of this bill has been discussed in the SMA, the administrative rules couldn't even do that. Like, the county planning department administrative rules cannot make it over-the-counter. The Parks Department's administrative rules cannot make it over-the-counter. The only authority that could make that over-the-counter would be the whole state legislature. And I, I, the state legislature is not poised at any point, we're seeing, to allow for further commercial intensification in the SMA. Let's not make sure that was covered. Administrative rules can't make any commercial venture in SMA outright ministerial.
I guess when I look at Mission Creek, I don't wanna really broil anybody, but like, you know, I, I was part of Holly Hollow Vi trying to get that there. Lived right across the street from it. Not right at the very beginning, but I, I was going to be living across the street from it. It's competitive with my own business at the time. I was at those meetings. I saw the limitations. I'm not trying to create a problem for them. They violate those limitations on the regular, every week, right?
I'm not...
They are. It's the left-hand turn lanes. It was all coming from HDOT. I can give you those things. But so, I, I went and I looked at it a couple days ago, and I remember when it happened. So unless there are people to be willing to stick up for all the, it takes courage to sit there and be slammed, right? And all the, the negativity that comes by filing a complaint. And we, we divided families 30 years ago, and that was before the internet. Those are gonna be problematic areas. And so I want to be really careful on that without hurting these people. Can you tell me what is problematic about passing this amendment the way it is right now? And then we just put a new bill forward to deal with the state and county parks. And so that process will happen and flow. Can we separate these two pieces so that we can pass it for private community use facilities and put them on a different timeline than to be putting the county and state parks?
You absolutely can.
So tell us how we can do that, because I want to do that.
Well, your draft bill bifurcates essentially that the community use facilities can have markets one and the county parks can't without a use permit. That, that's how I read your draft.
Yeah, no, no, that's what we've already done. Not, not mine, not mine. Mine gets, it, well, actually, mine has, they have to go and get, they have to go for the Planning Commission, correct? Mine has going...
For the county, I read your draft amendment to say that the community use facilities, essentially on private property, can go through the Class 1 zoning permit process and the notification, the requirements and the notification. But that if you want to go a farmer's market one or artisan market one on a county or state park, it still needs to go through the use permit process. And maybe I'm reading this wrong.
That's what, because, because it basically...
I just took it out.
That's what, because, because it basically takes out county and state, so they would basically have to go through the special use permit.
Okay, so that's how I want it to be. I want them to have to do that because...
No, you were just asking me how you do that. I'm saying your proposed amendment does do that.
Okay, so, okay, I thought you were saying you couldn't do that. So my proposed amendment is, is trying to do that.
Yeah.
Because I think, um, what I know about the market, it's hard to say, put something in Waileua Homesteads Park and have that really rage forward unless you're doing something kind of one-off to help a, a nonprofit or something. There's just not the market up there to make these things work out. If it does, great, you know? But we can still get there, right? They just have to go through a use permit process, and they can decide to have it up there. Is that what you're saying?
They would have to do the use permit process.
They would have to do the use permit process. And so that, that, I don't see a problem with that, because if the community up there wants it, then they would have it. It's not gonna be a visitor industry thing. Princeville Park is a visitor industry thing. Any of these ones that I'm really worried about is gonna be a visitor industry thing. That's where the, that's where you build the market.
Just to clarify, Councilmember, are you asking, on the implementation, I'm saying, your amendment does that. Are you asking for our position on that?
No, I'm not. I'm just trying to make sure, because there's always a challenge. Yes, um, Fern?
Councilmember Holly.
I'm asking for a position on that.
Um, I don't have a strong, let's say, the planning department doesn't have a strong opposition to the draft proposal for amendment. I'd say we do have some, you know, opposition in general, in the sense that the overall bill to allow for the potential for farmers' markets and artisan markets, you, to kind of go back to Council Chair's point about markets in general, right? This is not a land use that is anything new. This has occurred for centuries and is one of the oldest land use form of patterns. Um, and if you look at, kinda, I mean, to get too philosophical, but if you look at planning in general, and what we've been trying to do over the past decade, and what much of the planning industry is trying to do, is recognizing the previous historical patterns of land use development that occurred before zoning codes were around. The town core areas, the plantation camps, since we have plantation camp, or, this has come to you folks, recognize that those evolved organically without zoning mechanisms, and created actually really wonderful spaces and wonderful towns and wonderful urban environments. And our zoning code, to a certain degree, pushed much of our development patterns for some time into a suburban sprawl, strip mall development pattern. And so we're trying to recalibrate the code so that, you know, if we took away zoning code at all, it would just further go into strip mall style development. But we're not trying to recalibrate to redirect it back to what originally existed, that some of our zoning codes outright prohibit. They outright prohibit plantation camps. They outright prohibit, um, some of the town core development patterns we see in Waimea or Kapaa. Um, and we're trying to recalibrate our codes to allow them. And so in the space of markets, which evolved organically for centuries, and occurred, quite honestly, in community spaces, they occurred on the commons, if you will. And those markets, to a certain degree, are indeed retail venues. But markets as a, as a, in general, from a planning perspective, are greater, there's, there's some as greater than all parts, in that there is a social gathering component. I think the Council Chair touched on in his presentation, there is a cultural and social aspect to markets that feed into the greater community. And so this bill as a whole was, you know, us working with the council was introducing it, is more than just Princeville, is more than just Grow Farms, saying, how can we look at possibly recalibrating the system to allow these markets with some guardrails to evolve organically into what they were before? And so that's what I'm saying, Councilmember. I'm not like adamantly opposed, because I think your amendment addresses a lot of problems that are occurring today that we need to fix. Why I'm just not fully in support of your amendment is because allowing them to occur somewhat organically, and definitely with rails, because the county parks have a system that has a lot of rails on it, to allow them to potentially occur somewhat in the parks, we're still supportive of that.
Okay. Does somebody else have something? I, I definitely have a, I have a comment.
Okay.
I'm just gonna make a comment on that in response. Historically, when we're talking over time, we didn't have cars, we didn't have planes, we didn't have non-stop flights. We didn't have, even once we had planes, we didn't have the dearth of tourism that we have now that is overwhelming. It didn't derive our, um, our economy. And what drives that economy has changed so much. And the secondary piece on that is, you know, real estate sales is actually number one. So we don't even have any housing. So to compare the present to the past isn't fair. Even prior to, um, the hurricane, Aniki, the way we had community gathering spaces, the courthouse that was in, uh, you know, Hanalei, or the movie theater that was in Kilauea, or, we had all kinds of these other gathering spaces. And, um, I will say that, um, if my amendment doesn't pass, I, I would encourage somebody to defer till we have five members, so somebody else might vote to pass this. Because I have been a part of making really well-intended, um, policies when I wasn't even in office, but I fought for things that succeeded, or I had great ideas. And I, I pushed them through. And, um, like the farms in Moloa, you know, who could have thought? What happened, happened. And they're all my friends that live there, by the way. Not all of them, but a lot of them, most of them that I know. I know that the best of intentions can have all kinds of bad outcomes. So if my colleagues are listening, I accept this. If this doesn't pass, I'm certainly not going to try and withdraw it. If it doesn't pass, I'm telling you now, I am going to vote no today. I would recommend, if this doesn't pass, that somebody else move to defer. So it defers to a time where there are five people in, um, the, the committee, and you don't, you can, you can overrule me. But I don't want to live with another mistake that I've made. I've made many. I've made many. I like to think I've done better, more good than bad, but I've had a number of things come forward that I thought was the best idea, and it wasn't, because of the unintended consequences. So, um, I'm just letting you guys know that.
Councilmember Holly?
Thank you. Um, so you're saying that you're not comfortable with the checks and balances?
Hang on real quick. Just as a procedure, we're still, the rules are still suspended, so if, if they're gonna be done with the questions, I would suggest you call a meeting back to order, and then Councilmembers can comment. Uh, and, and then you still have the audience, uh, the members of the public to testify on the main bill. I don't think they were given that opportunity.
Okay, any more questions for planning? Thank you very much. Call a meeting back to order and...
Public testimony?
Something like, Councilmember Holly, I have a question.
I thought for that.
On the amendment, yeah?
Yes, please.
On the amendment?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, you're not comfortable with the, the many steps, um, that it would take to approve a park market, even though it may go, I mean, at minimum, without an SMA in a park that's not an SMA, six months to six years or seven years?
She said 18 months.
But if it has an SMA, up to six or so years?
I'm not comfortable passing this the way it is right now. I, I, I really feel like you need to have, I bet you if you have the fulcrum, you're gonna be able to pass it.
Absolutely.
I'm not going to live with it. I feel like it's a big mistake. And I...
Do you not support the market in Kapaa?
I support the market in Kapaa. That's the one piece that has a challenge.
What about the one that you suggested?
And, if nobody complains about the market in Kapaa, it's not gonna have a problem, and I don't think that anybody will complain. It's complaint-driven, and this doesn't change it from being complaint-driven. It's, we, we don't fix things for decades unless they're complaint-driven. And so I'm not trying to shut down the market in Kapaa, but I am not going to open this up to what could be there, because I have been involved enough times when they say, oh, we're gonna get some rules. And you get the rules. And the rules are really unacceptable. And we don't have people paying attention. So I, I'm telling you, and I'm getting a look from somebody I love and care about deeply, and I'm trying hard to address your need.
Okay, um, I have questions, like, there are kind of comments to you, so tell me when, because I don't want to procedurally miss.
Hold on, uh, Councilmember, go ahead. Councilmember Holly?
Is it okay that they're not just questions?
Sure. We're having discussion.
Okay, if it's discussion, then I can kind of, um, so I'm...
Everybody's limited to the time limit on the discussion, I know. So you run the clock.
Should we, should we take public testimony first?
I, I, if there's no more questions, I'll introduce her. I would suggest we do the, the public testimony, uh, and then come back to order, and then take the vote. On the floor amendment.
On the floor, okay. So there's no further questions right here for now, then, right? So, okay.
I guess, I have one more question for Councilmember Cowden. Um, so if this amendment passes, which basically just takes out, um, like, the middle role of the presentation I did, which is farmer's market one and artisan market one on state, state park facility and county park, park facility, um, property, your intent is to come back with a new bill to...
Well, what, okay, go ahead, finish your question.
No, because I heard you mention you wanted to have a new bill or something earlier, but then with your comment now, it sounded like you're just not comfortable at all, so...
So what I'm saying is, if we pass my amendment, I'm really good with how it is. And then, then I'm completely willing, if it needs to be me, or it could be you guys, to reintroduce a bill next week, even, or as soon as it can, that it's the next number that would come up, that we would be addressing the centerpiece, this state parks and all that kind of thing. Because that might take a long time. And, but I'm not going to pass that till I have a better idea of what the rules and regulations are going to be. I want to know what they are. You know, I want to know, I want to draft. They, we, maybe we can't finish it, but I, I'm, I'm not going to do it, because I know what happens. And so I will, if this passes, um, the first column and the third column can just move forward and pass and be fine. And it takes care of everybody in this room. Unless somebody complains about the Kapaa market, which I don't think they will, that will continue to carry on till we get through these other things. So we can be parallel working on the other stuff. But I, I've learned through mistakes, and I've learned through watching things when I have fought hard to have something happen. Fern and I did one together, and the Council Chair was right about what he said. And so was Bernard. And how passionately I fought that. And I was wrong.
I don't know what you guys are talking about, but, um, when it comes back to this, do you envision a bill that's any different than what it is now?
Uh, it doesn't have to be.
Because you're saying, oh, just bring it back up in the next week, but, I mean, we just...
Because I want this to pass to move for them, and that so we don't get held back. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna be reckless, because what'll happen is if this passes today, we still have to pass it. I'm not gonna pass a blind bill. It's, to me, it's a blind bill. I'm not gonna pass it.
I think when I spoke, when we had a meeting with Pat Porter with Parks, they said they're not gonna do rules and regulations unless a bill like this is passed, because the rules and regulations process takes so long, they're not gonna say, let's go do a farmer's market and artisan's market rules and regulations when we don't have any support from the legislator, from the legislature, us, on whether we can actually do it in the parks or not. And so this sets the, sets the clock for them, not sets the clock, but sets the trigger for them to say, okay, we have farmer's mar, we are allowed to do farmer's market one and artisan market one in parks. This, we definitely have to do rules and regulations. If this is not triggered, then I don't see Parks doing any rules, spending any time on rules and regulations. They're gonna go through a process that has public hearing, um, small business regulatory review board, but not know if they're even gonna be able to do it, because we're not aligning everything together.
Let me just, real quick, the, the Parks Department, Plan Department, Public Works Department, every department that comes up with administrative rules, take the direction from the bill or the, the ordinance that was passed.
Yes.
So you're right, Mr. Konashiro. You're not gonna see rules, a draft rules, until the bill is passed. They're not gonna do it, because they, they're gonna have to set up the, the structure of the rules that is in line with the, with the, with the ordinance that is passed. So it's not gonna happen. So, again, just, just for clarification, this body says policy. If we're not okay with allowing the Parks Department or any department to do whatever, we don't trust them, that we're not gonna allow, we, we don't want to pass it because we're afraid that the rule's not gonna be accurate, then you put your concern in the bill. If you want something that, that you want, you feel so strongly about that you need to happen in this bill, then put it in the bill. Run an amendment and take a vote. Because you're not gonna get rules. You will not get a draft of the rules until the bill is passed. So you put in a cart before the horse, it's not gonna happen. So for you to say that, you know, we passed this today, and then we'll go work on some other bill, well, that's fine and dandy, but what is the new bill gonna say? Is it, what is, what in this bill right now don't you like?
This is her behavior. What?
Excuse me. That, that is the public.
I know, but she's, she's been, she's been burning me in the...
Hear me out, hear me out. Hear me out.
I, I want to point out, point of order. She's laughing at me. I'm tired of this.
Call a recess. I'll have a recess at this time. Stop. Time a minute recess.
...viable for this other bill that you are proposing to introduce that pertains to properties on state and county.
Well, so what I ask both parks and planning is what I felt like, and I don't know if any of you guys looked at this thing that I handed out, this piece where we have the colors, where it goes by different moku. I feel that what would be really good is if by moku or area that there is community outreach meetings, so people could decide what they want, because each, each part of the island has different impacts. Like Elieli, for example, doesn't have to endure the amount of visitors that they does Poitou, right? So people have really, the communities have different needs, different wants, different economies in them. We have at least three separate economies on our island and different levels of impact. So, um, I'll give one more example. You walk down the street in Hana Le, you might know one out of 10 people on the street. The rest of them don't live here. If you walk down the street in Hanapepe, up, up somewhere, or especially like Elieli, you probably know most everybody. Kilauea, you know probably half. So they all have different needs. And to me, what I feel is responsible is to be having, um, you know, the community associations, the business associations, all being able to come together and talk about what they want for their parks, how to do it, and, um, and that you have a calm, happy way of what we want, where we want it. And so, you know, to me, when you have a private property, you've got a group that already has that control. And so, if we took the time, because when I asked parks, I said, "How can we do it so we're, we're bringing everybody in?" And I think it was parks, or it might have been, planning, they said, "That's at least five to six months worth of work." So five to six months worth of work, your businesses could be hung to dry at that point, right? So I don't want to have to wait for those five to six months to happen. And, and what I was saying, for other reasons, in parks, over the years, I have asked the parks departments for their rules, and whether they just choose not to give them to me, I haven't been given the rules. You know, you kind of can look in different places, but, um, that's, that's what I want. I want the community, I want the community to be able...
No, because I, I asked the question.
So I, I'm answering. I'm answering. No, you didn't finish. I want to have the communities be able to be...
Correct. So, right now in this bill, right now in this bill that has was so eloquently stated by Mr. Conasuro, there's notifications to be made, right? Parks determine whether or not it's a suitable location, and then they will be sending out notifications to community members within 300 feet. That's in the bill. That is there.
300 feet. 300 feet, that's, that's nothing, that's negligible. That's nothing, that's negligible.
Okay, well, in your opinion, it is.
In my opinion.
Okay. Uh, and then they gotta apply for a class one zoning permit. And then he goes out to bid. So I, I guess my question is, what would you do differently in your proposed bill? I don't want to hear about the rules, because you're not going to get rules. What, what would you do? What part of this is so upsetting that...
Who decides that there is, it goes out to bid and there's one, um, one vendor? And, and where the guardrails on that...
You know, Councilwoman Cowden, you always puts up, put out these scenarios, potential scenarios. We're, we're discussing policy.
I know, that, that's what I'm discussing.
So, the question is, what part of this? We're not talking about the bids. We don't control bids. That goes to procurement, state law, that's how they do it, so...
Well, who decide the one?
I, what do you mean, who decides the one? If there's one bidder, guess who gets it?
Why, who decides it's going to be one bidder? Or where's the rules on the bidder? Like, if there's gonna be, like, if they break which...
Again, chapter 102 determines how that operates. That's not our kuliana. Our kuliana is determining the policy. So my question, my specific question is, right now, it sounds like you don't like the 300 feet.
I don't like the 300 feet?
Okay, what else don't you like in this bill?
I don't like that the way that you would go out to public hearing is probably just some notification in the paper, or somebody has to be smart enough to look online, like they have to know what's in front of us. And, you know, it needs a real outreach. And to me, I would want to know what the parameters are on a bid. Like, if that bid, if the person who gets it, if they get it forever until they break rules, do, is there a sundown when it might be reconsidered? It just doesn't seem like it's strong enough. I mean, it just, it, I can, I can easily see where there could be problems.
I, I get it.
Yeah, I mean, the whole bid process is out of our hands. It's a procurement process that the state has done. And, um, you know, when we talked to Pat, he said, you know, they can make the agreement for a year or two years, and they can, they have to sign an agreement with this person. They're not hand choosing them. They have to go through this whole process, that whole process we put up. So, um, if there's only one bidder, it's up to parks, whether they want to go at that one bidder or not, based on that process that they have. So I'm not really understanding what the hesitation is.
I don't understand why, who decided it's one bidder?
I did it, you said one bidder.
No, but that's what we said, it said here, we were told.
You're, you're creating a scenario...
I, it's all confusing, and by the way, we don't have any kind of, because of Sunshine Law, we don't get to hear it. So I was told, they're only going to put it out to bid, I think we, it was set on the floor today. We'll, we can pull, um, Kaina back up, if, if we need to ask, can we suspend it?
It's going to follow chapter 102 of the state. That's how it's going to do. The county cannot dig verse or diverge.
So how many, does chapter 102 of the state say, if the counties decide to have, um, a farmer's market in a park, it can only go out to bid to one, only, they would only pick one market?
I don't know where you're coming up with the one market. An RFP, an RFP is a request for proposal. It gets published. Anyone that wants to put in for that proposal can submit a proposal. That's how it works. All the proposals come into our purchasing department, our procurement office, and it gets processed following chapter 102. That's how it's done. It's not going to say RFP for one person. It's not.
And we do, we do have the county attorney, if we want to suspend the rules, and she can maybe hopefully clarify the RFP process and the rules, if you'd like.
Well, because it's been said we're going to pick one vendor, one market, right? One market. And I, I, where does it say that in here, that we pick, that there's one, like, because that was before?
Hold on, suspend the rules, and have our attorney come to the floor and ask the questions.
Laura Barzalai, so it's Hawaii Reva Statutes 102, and it requires a bidding process for anything that occurs on county land. And it does not restrict the number of bidders. There's a request for proposal that's prepared by the department, it follows procurement rules, and it goes out to the public through a publication process. It's very detailed, it follows...
So let's just say we're looking at artisan markets two, um, which can have a, actually...
Artisan's Market Two will end up being a, a used permit, so it's going to have to go through planning commission and have other carriers.
So let's go, we'll go artisan markets one. Somebody applies...
On county land.
On county land. Are they getting two days, and then somebody else can get two days? Are we going to get seven? We kind of narrowed it, right, to just two days?
Well, the ordinance will control what goes into the request for proposal, because there'll be parameters on it. They won't be able to go beyond that, and parks will come up with the qualifications for the bidders.
Trying to find our bill, so where...
It results in a contract.
We, we narrowed it down to two days, right? No more than two days in a park.
For Artisan's Market One, it's two days, no more than two, two days.
Two days.
Two days.
So let's say there's, and it's no more than two days in the park, no matter who it is. So maybe we had two days, maybe there's one artisan market that's on Tuesday, and one artisan market on Saturday? So then we have two different ones that would be able to get the bid?
Good, if that's what parks wanted to do.
That's what I'm trying to find out, is it, is it two? Is it like, or can there be two that actually asked, and they get on the same day? Like, I mean, where, where I came up with all this, is all this challenge that we had with the voting industry, and went through huge issues over something like this. And, um, anyway, I, I don't understand. I understand what the process is when something goes out to bid, I understand that. But I don't understand where this is...
So nothing in, nothing in the request for proposal can violate an ordinance. It has to remain within the parameters of the ordinance, and then it also has to go through a peddlers and concessionaires process too. So it goes through a couple of layers. It goes through a procurement, so to speak, process that results in a contract, and then it goes through peddlers and concessionaires, which is another public hearing. So there are multiple opportunities for it to go before the public. This is, we're talking about county lands. We're not talking about...
Talking about county lands.
We're not talking about the added layer of the beach park, which would also require an SMA permit.
So regularly, this stuff is violated right now, right? Regularly, we have this stuff happening, so I just don't know, this is like an addition, so...
I guess you'd have to make a policy call on how you want to deal with that, or how you want to address that. Do you want to bring folks into compliance through zoning, or you don't? So that's something that you'll have to decide.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, okay.
This, this might be a good place to get public testimony.
Now, can we, uh, the public...
On the floor amendment.
Floor amendment.
On the floor amendment.
On the floor. Okay, so this is what we're going to do, since, uh, it was suspended as an amendment.
Oh, were they gonna, um, it was mentioned that possibly to save time, that they could speak on the amendment and the entire bill as amended already?
Since this is the final floor amendment, we will now take testimony on both. Okay? So the amendment and the bill as amended.
First registered speaker is Matthew Keevland, followed by Lauren Taylor Davis.
Thank you. So I appreciate you spending so much time on this. My name is Matthew Keevland, sorry. Go now? Okay. Matthew Keevland, um, the, the farmer's markets, just generally broadly, as a father, phenomenal for our family. We find that the benefit is twofold. First of all, my three and a half-year-old daughter has had a lemonade stand at this market. She has learned to talk to customers, she's learned to make change, she has done so much that has helped develop her, and we already know that these markets are beneficial. I know I'm, I'm maybe beating a dead horse, but I, I wanted to share this because it meant so much to us. She, she learned to run there, but, but beyond the, the opportunity for kids to learn entrepreneurship, and for the community to come forward and, uh, and make money, uh, you know, the, the local community be able to make money here, there's also just this, this sense of, for once, Princeville, this boxy place, has this fair. And it feels amazing, for a few hours on Saturday, to just have, you know, just a little bit of fun, you know? It's like, what I imagine old festivals must have been like, when they were between building log cabins or something, you know? And it's just, everyone comes out, there's live music, and we miss it so much. We, every Saturday, we just miss, you know, we miss it. And I know that there's a lot of, um, concern about making sure that the communities aren't impacted negatively by these events, and I appreciate that concern. None of us want to see a flea market like Atahuahua Stadium in our neighborhood. I also appreciate that the community has the chance to kick them out if it's not good. And on Kauai, I have noticed that I'm much more likely to hit, you know, to, to talk to someone about slowing down in the neighborhood than they are to get a ticket from a police officer. And I'm not afraid to talk to them about it, right? Because the community, this is what makes it quite special. The community has this way of policing itself. And as much as possible, I would love to share that sentiment, that I believe the community will, to some degree, always continue to protect itself from some undue commercial activity in the parks. With that, please continue. I, I appreciate though, and I, I hope that you're able to, to make this possible, to come back soon, because we missed that market, and all the communities, Matthew.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren Taylor Davis, followed by Rosalie Kahoe Laoli'i.
Can I take my wife's place? Speaking? Okay? Yes.
Right, come forth. State your name.
Hi, everybody, my name is Dylan Davis. I am Lauren Taylor's husband. Felicia, this is for you, and I, I don't want to be confrontational, and I think you support us. You seem like you love us.
Hundred percent, yes.
You, you enjoy these markets, you participate in them. I'm begging you to let us back. Like, this took my wife's heart and soul out, and for you to try and change this bill, you're taking away the, these are the people, everyone here, you want to put advertisements up to let everyone know what's going on? Everyone's had their opportunities. Most of these people in the room probably voted for you.
Were my friends.
Yeah, and so please, I just urge you to not change the bill, let it pass the way it is. It, it is the right thing to do, and, and I know that it's hard to change opinions on the spot, and you have it in your heart to keep it the way it is. You convict it in some way, shape, or form, but I urge you to change your conviction and help us get back to work. I mean, it's really hard seeing my wife every day, like, she's an artist, and she's just, she's just in a fluster mode now, and what was taken away, and I know that even when you pass this bill, it doesn't mean Princeville's coming back. I understand that. There's rules for that, and not everyone, it, when, this market, like, no one's going to just be popping up markets everywhere. It's a tight group. We watch out for each other, and we watch to see who's coming in. They're not just going to let people pop in and do anything they want. And like they said, I'm not an expert, I don't know this, how these old rules work. I didn't even go to college. But what I've learned today is that if we pass this, things will take effect in the rules that you were looking for to protect the other, not the community centers, but the state places, that, that can get the ball moving. And it doesn't sound like it's easy to, to just start one up as it is. So I urge you, from the bottom of my heart, just pass the bill that is, so we can just move forward and help everyone get back to their lives that they had created. And my wife left Kauai, left her family for 10 years, and went to college, and worked her butt off to learn this industry, and learn. And when she came back here, there's nowhere to work. She can't just work, she had to build her own. And to open a store up is beyond impossible, and the money it takes is very difficult to come by. So these are our opportunities to build up to that. So thank you for your time, and I really, just, I really hope you can change your opinion on this. Thank you.
Thanks.
Rosalie Kahoe Laoli'i, followed by Kaylee Nakamura.
Rosalie.
Kaylee Nakamura, followed by Desiree Hirani.
Kay, anybody?
Uh, Missy Hedstrom?
Desiree's here.
Oh, Desiree.
Sorry, I didn't prepare anything, so I hope this is going to make sense. But, um, again, like Dylan was saying, I really learned a lot. I don't know all the rules, a lot of this stuff is like over my head and super confusing, but it seems like we have an opportunity to pass it today, or we can push it back a couple of months, and it's going to pass then anyway. So like, why wait for two more months and have us be out of work for two months longer? If the amendment that you're proposing goes in today, it means the Princeville Market's not going to be able to open back up, because they're going to follow the rules, the Princeville Community Association is going to follow the rules, and it's not going to include, I, I, I'm not saying this right, but the gist of it is, if your amendment gets in today, then the Princeville Market can't open up again, because the Princeville Board is going to follow the recommendations about the county and state things. I don't know, like I said, I'm probably not, um, describing this right, but going back to the, if it doesn't pass today, it's just going to get pushed back, and when there's more than three people, it's going to pass anyway. So why wait for those couple of months? Let's just do it today. You know, I voted for you, I've campaigned for you, I, like, he said, we know you care about the markets, and we also, none, nobody wants the beach parks to get taken over by people selling trinkets. And I think that we just have to plat, trust that the planning department and the parks department is not going to allow that to happen. Nobody wants the beach parks to get filled up with people selling, yeah, food trucks are great, but nobody wants people to be selling a bunch of trinkets. And I feel like that's maybe where the fear comes from, to separate the county and state parks and all that. So, anyway, I'm just urging you, it's going to, seems like it's going to pass anyway, why not pass it today and wait for a couple of months? Thank you.
Last registered, registered speaker is Desiree Hirani.
Good morning again, council members, and especially to you, Felicia Cowden. For the record, I'm deeply concerned at your outwork, outburst towards me as someone in the community in a public meeting, which, from my understanding, is completely against the rules. Um, now I'm going to continue with my testimony. Based on our personal conversations, I already know where you stand. You told me very directly and very clearly that you were not going to support this bill. And I've carried that ever since. After doing my own research, I was very shocked to discover that in your seven public years of service, you have not passed one single bill. Seven years in a seat of power, and not one piece of positive legislation advanced. Further, that record doesn't reflect leadership, it reflects complaint, um, complacency, a placeholder, a bystander. Now, after years, you've chosen this bill, one that directly affects the people you say you stand for, the people you say, you know, small businesses, Kapuna, Kanaka, families, farmers, vendors across the island. And this is your moment to finally speak up and do something. This alone is baffling. Plus the fact that you have clearly demonstrated today that you do not even understand what seat you hold, you don't understand the policies and regulations, or how bills are, are, are made. Wow. Now, not many people know this about me, and I'm not doing this to boast, but let me just share something about myself, the people that you represent. For over 20 years of business, I have deeply been committed to supporting small businesses, not just here on this island, but statewide, and I have a record to prove that. I have been honored and recognized on many occasions through the Chamber of Commerce, twice, for being the Entrepreneur of the Year, Pacific Business News, 40 under 40, and overall Business Leader of the Year, Outstanding Filipino Business Owner of the Year, all based on my commitment of service. Years ago, I also played an instrumental role in defeating a harmful bill that was made and attacked small businesses, ultimately getting a veto. And not only that, but I was the co-author of writing a good bill. I wish you had one under your belt. Now I share this because it shows that I chose my, to use my time and my voice and my kuliana respectfully.
So Kaylee, yeah, the time is up at this time, so you want to wrap up, or you want to come back?
I'll wrap it up right now.
Another, okay.
Okay. So, right now, you still have a choice to not go with ego, and to go for the greater good, and make a decision, and not just hear your voice. Do something that actually manners, matters, because you're going to leave, and these people, the people of the island, will remember you, not for what good you did, but for standing in the wake.
Bill DiCosta, followed by Anthony Payden.
Okay. Billy DiCosta, for the record, you know, I sat in this room this morning, I've listened to our constituents speak, your constituents, they put you guys in office to do their work, not your work, their work. Every one of these people that I heard speak this morning supports what you guys are trying to do. They don't support what the one council member is trying to do, which is you, Ms. Cowden. So I ask you all sitting here, listen to your constituents, and do what is pono for Kauai, because that's your job. Your job ain't to make personal decisions, your job is to listen to your constituents. This is a good thing. I'm glad that some of you did your homework, because it seems like some of you didn't. It was clear with the last speaker. Thank you, have a good day, and thank you for all what you guys do for Kauai.
Anthony Payden.
My name's Anthony. Uh, my wife is a vendor at this market. She makes wonderful Indian food from love, and, uh, I just was observing, and I wanted to say a few things. First of all, I, I recognize her concern, she mentioned about overtaking of vendors being set up everywhere, and this and that. And I observed that it seemed like this would have already occurred, because basically there's vendors set up by the scenic lookout on the route to Hana Malo, certain areas, uh, outside by where Kilauea is, but it, it's not, it's not a bunch of people overwhelming, there's a little people here and there. And the opportunity for that to occur seems like would have already have occurred, because if there's no, anything organized, what this is occurring right here, then it would have been a free-for-all. So if anything, this is sort of putting a guideline to help so that that doesn't happen. So I just want to let you know that that's what it feels like to me, and I understand your concern, but it seems like this would actually help that concern. And it also seems like, from just this observation this morning, that the separation of what you're talking about, that it is a separate issue, that this is sort of like the over umbrella over it, and in your concern, once this is passed, then it could be worked, and it actually has a foundation for it to apply. So it's almost like, uh, going from the top and working back down, instead of staying down here, it's like, well, the Supreme Court decided this, well, no, we need the lower court to decide. No, the Supreme Court's here, they're going to decide it right now, if you let it pass. And then I felt your, your compassion, when you mentioned something about, you know, six months, business could go out, they could lose their business, right? And I could feel your, your heart. Well, another couple of months, some of these businesses might be gone, like you just said, and you were afraid of. So right now, you have an opportunity to, you, you spoke your voice, you, they know what you want, you can work that into something, right? But right now, you can have an opportunity to pass this, and all these beautiful people can go back to work, because it doesn't just affect, say, 60 vendors, there's 60 vendors, then there's five other family members, so that's like 300 people, and then it affects the whole community. And they're all loving, hardworking people. My wife, she's very hardworking, so I just asked that maybe, for this moment, you could just be compassionate, set aside that, understanding that your voice has been heard, and they all seem willing to work with you. Maybe this isn't the time to, to fight over that part, and maybe just have some compassion and help all these people up here that want to work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wanting to testify? Say your name, please.
Uh, my name is Amy Arnett Smith.
Sit down, relax.
Okay. Do I need to push a button or something? Okay. So it seems like there was buttons involved. Um, I hate public speaking, so, um, I am a vendor, I have been a vendor at farmer's markets for 20 years, I have farmed here on Kauai for 20 years. My husband Brad Smith is usually the speaker, but he had to go to physical therapy, because farming broke him. So he's at physical therapy today. And I just want to say, the farmers are tired, okay? We're exhausted. We just got off of, like, three months of fighting fucking parakeets, man. Okay, we've lost every year of fucking lacewings, parakeets, funguses, viruses, and now the things we can control, we're going to let go? I mean, farmers need a break, we're exhausted. And anytime something like this happens, we're just like, why? Why on earth are we doing this? Why are we growing food? I'm all the time to Brad, just like, dude, fucking, start mowing all these rich people's properties for $150 an hour, take your tractor, mow, why farm anymore? Because we finally get a market where we're making money, where we can, our son can go to a soccer tournament on Oahu without us being like, oh my god, how are we going to pay for the... for this? We finally say, oh, okay, you know what? I have my booth, which I make skincare products out of mango steam. We actually grow on our farm, we climb the trees, we pick the fruit, I process it, and a facility we built on our property, and I make skincare products that actually has helped people with their X, Y, and Z, and stuff, it's really good. But regardless of that, I'm farming for twenty years. I'm clim- I just, two weeks ago, was climbing mango steam trees at almost fifty years old. And it was really nice, you know, to have the market, um, Princeville, but this is, I know, for all markets. I'm just saying, protect farmers. Farmers are tired, we cannot have stuff constantly taken away. Nature is constantly fighting against us. The thing, the small things that we can control, we need to do what is right for the farmers. And I know that there are farmers, or like, people that buy shit and resell it, we hate them, we fucking hate them, honestly. We're like, we're like, for, no, oh, sorry, sorry. We don't like it, but you know what? You cannot throw the baby out with the bathwater, okay? Because there's a lot of farmers that are there that are working so hard. And yeah, there's one or two that do crappy stuff, but whatever, like, I don't care, they gotta make a living too. I love all the people of this island, I want all the people of this island to do well. And I just do think it is a little bit unfair when one or two, like, handful of people gets to come in and be like a poopy pants and ruin it for like fifty hardworking families. So I just wanna say, as a farmer, I'm tired, I want to have my job protected.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wanting to speak? Come up. Say your name.
Uh, Council, uh, my name's Billy Carter. Felicia, I just wanted to reiterate what Ms. Yee was trying to say earlier, that the Princeville Community Association has said that they are going to follow what the county decides. The rules are for county parks and state parks, not for the community use properties. So if we pass your amendment, um, it won't bring back the Princeville Farmers Market, that, that won't be allowed to continue. Furthermore to that, um, I understand you have personal convictions and have made mistakes in the past, uh, that's, that's fair to feel that way, but remember that, as Mr. DiCosta said, you're here representing your constituents, and it's very, very clear that the majority of your constituents want you to move forward with this bill, including me, who I did vote for you, and, you know, we're trusting you to do what's right for us, not, not just, you know, sometimes you have to swallow your fear and take a risk. I've learned in business and in a personal life, the only way to move forward is to take risks, you have to take risks, otherwise things just stagnate. So just ask you, I know if it's a personal risk, and for the sake of the community, please give us an eye vote on this today. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. DiCosta? Second time, yes.
Billy DiCosta, for the record, second time. I sit here and I listen to our constituents ask, please, can you please vote for this? Today, I must speak on behalf of everybody behind me. We no longer wanna ask you, please, pass this. I'm telling you, today, pass it. It's your job, your people have spoken, now you listen. Thank you.
Uh, any, go ahead, sir.
I'm Billy Kedstrom.
Wait, state your name.
I'm Billy Kedstrom. Um, I work for the county, I'm a fireman. Every day, I do what I have to do, every day, doesn't matter, I don't care. Doesn't matter how the hoses get laid out, how the fire goes out, the fire's gotta go out. This needs to go out today, that's all I ask. Do it.
Anyone else? Christian? Christian? Oh, right here, one more, one more time, she can come back. She got her tour ready. Okay, sorry. Okay?
Hi, everyone. Uh, my name, uh, Risa Marshall. Uh, thank you for everyone who gave us opportunity to be here today. It's many years ago, Felicia, um, I remember you and I know you're not gonna remember everybody. We have a Kauai Pentation Day.
You have what?
We, we have an event at Kauai Pentation Day in Kauai. So you walk around and you, you come see me. My booth have a nail shell, and you come ask me, you say, "I'm Felicia, can you vote for me?" Yes, I am vote for you on that time. Now, we voting in to help all the people in Kauai. A lot of people is have one job and have so many bill to pay. And many children, they have to taking care and pay bill. So it's, we ask for passing amendment bill on this moment. I know you care about everybody, that's why you here for us. And please, help us to consider, put us back to work, everybody need to work. You know, the bill is not waiting, we pay bill every day, every month, so we fought, we fought behind our. It's, you consider helping us or everybody in Kauai. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so any, okay, so at this time, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. And members, any discussion? Yeah, we're gonna vote on the two, yeah.
We're voting on one, right?
Wait, Councilmember Holland first.
I have a question, am I able to call planning back up though?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I-
Yeah, suspend the rules and call back.
Director Hall, please.
Sorry, gonna, uh, final hall on behalf of Planning Department, joined with Felicia Serves.
Thank you, Director. Um, just for clarity for me, um, here in the testimony that was just given, the amendment to remove county states and parks, um, given the fact that the bylaws of the Princeville Park are to operate that facility per the required, the allowance is on county and state lands, um, would this amendment therefore have the potential to not allow the Princeville Market to go forward?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. So, under standard community facilities, they could go forward with a class one zoning program, but the Princeville Market area is in the Princeville Park, and when Princeville was rezoned, or upzoned out, if you will, to its urban designations, that park area was designated a park, and ordinance itself says it can only be used for those type of uses that are generally allowed in park facilities. So the amendment here, actually, I apologize if I bring that up earlier, the amendment here would technically prohibit the Princeville Park, Market from continuing.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay, I have, I have a question. Wait, wait, how would that happen? I mean, like, cuz I, I, I talked to the executive director, we looked at, at least their rules and ordinances, and so theirs doesn't prohibit that. Theirs says, cuz I, I went through it with them, and I, we didn't see that it did that. So it's ours somehow?
Oh, we, we gotta stop, we don't have a quorum.
Okay, you were in the middle of answering when I said that I, I spoke with the executive director, we looked at their, their bylaws, you know, we were trying to see if that would, so we didn't see in their, at first, there was something about the commu- the community building, right? But that had to be in alignment with what is other community buildings in the parks, and it is. We didn't see in their bylaws where it said they have to be in compliance with, um, you know, whatever might else happen for, for the parks. So maybe we didn't know to look at your open zone piece, can you tell us what you were trying to say? Why would it be different?
So, and I don't have it in front of me, but, um, the result, when the overall Princeville area was upzoned, there was a certain area of that upzoning was designated for this park site. The park site was essentially handed over to the Princeville Community Association, that's the name, but, the association. And in the ordinance that upzoned the area, but designated this area a park, it specifies that that park cannot be used, or has to be used with, can only be used for, for those uses that are permissible in a county park, a neighborhood facility or a county park. And so, if there's a section of the zoning ordinance that says Farmers Market One and Artisan Market One are not permissible, outright permissible, in a county park, then by virtue of that, the overriding ordinance of the Princeville Park is signaling to them, is saying essentially, by virtue of that, you can't, the Princeville Market cannot occur.
Follow-up, follow-up question?
So that's not part of the Princeville bylaws, this is part of the zoning ordinance?
Part of the zoning ordinance itself, yeah.
That was my question. So I guess another question, when, when we met, we were talking about this, why wasn't that made clear then?
Uh, I'll, I'll be honest, I, it's, until the speaker spoke now, did I remember that that's actually another part of the piece of the puzzle. It's a bit like a Rubik's Cube, once you adjust certain parts and you adjust other parts. And when we were originally meeting Councilmember Cowan, I was presented, quite honestly, with having a use permit across the board for all facilities, and that's where I did signal that we would not be in support of that.
Use permit all across the board, you mean across all the property levels?
Correct.
Um, well, I just tried to simplify, just tried to-
No, and I hear you, and I, that's what I'm saying, like, it wasn't facetious on my part in the meetings we had prior to this formal meeting, for me to like hide this one provision, in assessing whether or not the use permit should be required across the board, I gave you my concerns, and that's what I was analyzing at the time. Now, looking at this provision, which I, I appreciate, you're just trying to nuance the level, from a nuanced perspective, allow the Princeville Market to occur while not necessarily opening up to all county parks. And on that proposal, I, I do have to say, in fully assessing it, 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 there would be a connection to the overriding zoning ordinance for Princeville that would prevent the Princeville Market from occurring.
Okay, members, any more questions for planning? Okay, this time, I'd like to call the meeting back to order. Members, any discussion? Go ahead, uh, Councilmember Kana Shor.
Well, um, given what the, um, Planning Director just said regarding it possibly affecting the Princeville Market going forward, also, just, um, you know, I understand the amendment, uh, Councilmember Cowan did not try, did not wanna try to affect the private property, um, properties, she was just trying to take out the county, county and state properties. But, um, at the end of the day, when we spoke with Parks, Parks said they needed that, um, in order to do their rules and regulations. Parks said they have, um, underutilized parks, that they feel like this could be a win-win for the community, um, and they were in favor of us moving forward on it. So for me, I will not be voting for this amendment. Um, I will not allow the threat of slowing this bill down to affect my vote on the amendment, because I think you have to look at the amendment as it is, not what's gonna happen. So, um, I will not be in support of the amendment. You know, again, I guess, just to reiterate, Parks wants this in, in, in order to make rules so that they can have a Farmers Market or Artisan Markets at county facilities. I think you saw, um, the process it takes, so even if we pass this bill, not at this one, but at full council, there's not gonna be a complete proliferation of commercial, um, businesses all through our county parks, because we saw that there's a huge process, and it starts with Parks doing admin rules, um, identifying suitable location, and it's all Parks that takes the ownership of it. It's not an individual that says, I wanna do this at the county park, let me do it. Parks is gonna say, we're gonna pick the county park, we're gonna see if it fits in with the area, we're gonna run the whole process, and at the end of the process, we're gonna do a RFP, and if you're interested, you can apply. And so, it's a very long process, um, there's a lot of checks and balances to it, I'm comfortable moving forward with it the way it is, um, so I will not be voting for the amendment. Again, and the ability for it to affect the Princeville Market from operating too, which is another, um, nail in the coffin, which is the complete opposite of what we've been trying to do with this bill, is to allow it to be able to continue where it's at. So that's, um, where I stand on the amendment.
Um, resigning, Chair Carvalho, please bear with me, I do have quite a bit to say. Start that timer, ladies. Um, so, a couple of things. Um, first of all, thank you, everyone. I, I wanna say that enforcement of this is not our job, um, that our job is to pass these provisions, and then should the mayor's team, should the administration not be enforcing it, then we need to address that. You know, to me, taking out, um, parks, county parks, is inappropriate for multiple reasons, including the aim of, of the bill. The, the bill is not one-off special legislation for you folks. In fact, I think that's unconstitutional, um, and I have my own concerns about drafting a bill that would only benefit maybe one market. You know, I, there, there, there are rules that are triggered from this, and there are plenty of time for community weigh-in, there's community weigh-in in the rules process, um, you know, and I would encourage Councilmember Cowan to weigh in on that rule process, if, if you're concerned about what those rules would look like, that's a perfect opportunity to do that. Honestly, I think it's kind of excessive, like, the amount of approval that goes into having a Farmers Market, um, I, I think is overly excessive in some ways. I think it's, I mean, possibly years before you can have, I wanna encourage these Farmers Markets, um, you know, I, I, the beach parks trigger the SMA, um, I'm not concerned about that part of it. I think, you know, farmers need help. Uh, I mean, everything I stand for, and the hu- huge thing that I ran on in my platform is encouraging agriculture and farmers, um, you know, local food security is a super passionate issue of mine, and, you know, we need every opportunity, I want Farmers Markets all over, I, I'm fine with them in our beach parks personally, and I'd love to weigh in during the rules-making process on that. I'd love to see one return out the front, um, so I can shop every Wednesday. Um, you know, I think community parks are for community, this is community to me. I, I don't understand why this has become, um, you know, this twisted thing about overcommercialization of our parks, county parks are for parties and soccer events and sports and bustling activity and community, and, and that's what a market one day a week provides. Um, you know, I, I'd like to see more markets, I wanna see Farmers Markets selling, farmers selling direct to consumers and making a profit margin. You know, more expansion away from tourism dependence, all the things that we talk about, all the things that we say we support. You know, I hope that these are increasingly places that people can depend on. I grew up going to the Kapaa Farmers Market my whole life, you know? Um, my step-grandma, Grandma Waka, she sold sprouts at the market when we were kids, I mean, we, we went and sold sprouts at the Farmers Market, I grew up at that market, that's in a county park. Um, I want it in a county park. I hope that these are increasingly places that locals can depend on to buy their groceries and local farm products rather than depending on Costco and Walmart and, and Safeway to bring in their Farmers Produce. Let's boost this, um, let's, let's get them everywhere, let's get them all over the island. You know, we are updating zoning, we are not rezoning parks, commercial, our- We are not rezoning parks, commercial or conservation, sorry, parks. Anything in conservation, this, none of this affects this. It's only for open residential and ag parcels to match existing use. That's been happening for decades illegally, okay? It's been happening for decades across our county, across our county parks. You know, I... To me, this measure is not something that we should have had twisted and controversially, it's a housekeeping bill. We have been permitting these markets and commercial parks for decades. I mean, I'm surprised that the code needs to be implicitly detailed to allow these thousand-year-old historical markets of places that people have gathered. There are checks and balances, we've gone through that. We've outlined these excessive processes that range between six months and seven years for a farmer's market. I mean, open it up. I don't understand. I mean, making it legal seems, you know, controlled with mechanisms and permits seems really reasonable. You know, we don't want to encourage pop-up random commercial vendors. These are markets, these are comprehensive organized markets, not random one-off vendors, you know. We're not commercializing our parks. We still have the SMA, when it's in the SMA. This protects the Sunshine Farmer's Market that Aunt Joanne Yucumura created and I grew up in, like I said, you know, which are on county lands. The existing one now, county lands. Neither Councilmember Conaschira or I would ever over-commercialize our parks. I mean, the parks are for games, activities. I am chair of Parks and Rec, and I can tell you that I work very closely with Director Porter, and he also wants to see farmer's markets encouraged and supported. But he would not prioritize that over the public use, over the soccer, over the sports. We've discussed this in length. I meet with him at least once a month. You know, this is something that the Parks Team supports. They want to have a part of that community within our county parks. In many ways, this just legalizes what we've already been doing and encourages these small businesses. The people that are selling at our markets, you know, they're my classmates. Lawrence, my classmate, I'm so proud of you, thank you for coming home. You know, like, these are kupuna, these are my Grandma Waka. Like, these are woodworkers, these are farmers, these are not tourism markets. These are markets for our people, these are places that our community can support each other, where we can be, create a more circular economy, where we can, you know, spend these times. I'm moved by the testimonies that you guys have shared. You know, the farmer's markets around Kauai are driven by and for local families. These are people I've known my entire life. You know, you guys are generational families in a lot of cases. This is... I mean, to me, it's so straightforward. There's checks, there's balances. It's not our job to enforce them, it's our job to say, yes, farmer's markets, artisan markets, they should be legal. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here today. And let me just speak on the amendment, because when this bill first came out, I had actually intended to create a similar amendment, because I did not, I was worried about the... I was worried about the potential abuse in the county parks. And then I saw Mr. Conaschira's amendment, and it just completely satisfied me. This here was sufficient for me. I think the community input, oversight by the Parks and Planning Departments, I think, I liked Councilmember Holland said, you know, there's got to be some level of trust between us and them across the street at the administration, that they're going to make sure that these parks are being used in a proper way. I have all the confidence in that with this current administration. So, I don't vote today, because I'm not in this committee, as Ms. Holland and I are not in the committee. So, I won't have a vote. But I'm hoping that this bill can move forward today, because this is the timeline that we are facing. If this passes today in either form, with or without this amendment, if it passes, it shows up next week, Wednesday, for a full council vote. And then, from that point, it moves on to the mayor for his signature, and then, everybody can go to work and get their permits. If it doesn't pass today, if this gets, if this amendment fails, and as Ms. Cowden said, if she decides to vote against the bill, then it'll get deferred to the 21st. And we'll have the same scenario, we'll have three members, so then it'll be deferred again to June 18th. And then, on June 18th, if it passes with the full council, with the full committee, which I fully expect, then it would show up on June 25th for the full council vote. So, we have two options, right? We pass the bill today, it shows up on next Wednesday, or we don't pass it today, and then it shows up on June 25th. So, about, what is that, five weeks, six weeks of a delay in this process? You know, I respect everybody's opinion, and I share the concerns. I think, I think the concerns were, as I said earlier, I think the concerns were addressed in the amendment. I am, if I was on this committee today, I would support this bill, I would support the bill, minus this amendment, because I had met with planning and Parks, I think, on the issue of whether or not Princeville could, could continue with, if we took out the state and a county, and, you know, hearing today that it's in the zoning ordinance, obviously, it's done for Princeville, it's done. And I think what Mr. Conaschira does, one of the reasons that we had moved, or the Planning Department moved so quickly to move this bill to the council, and then, you know, getting it over to Planning Commission, having them review and come back with a recommendation that we passed it. Now, again, when it came back, I was not very excited. I thought it was just way, way too broad and subject to abuse. But I think with this, what we saw today, I think it's a good bill. You know, I'll just put this out for Ms. Cowden. If, in fact, you support the market in Princeville, then pass the bill out today. Then you'll have an opportunity to introduce an amendment next week, or have one of the other members at the full council. If you believe your, your issue is going to get the votes, then do it at the full council, because if it doesn't, then at least the bill can go, you know, can pass, and then Princeville can move forward. If, you know, I've, well, you saw me right here today, I changed my vote, changed my position. It's not, it's not, it's cool. But I voted for amendments and voted against bills. I voted against amendments and voted for the bills in my past, in my history. It happens, you do what you got to do to make the best bill possible, even if you don't support the bill. I learned that from Joanne Yucumura. She would always, she would always support amendments, and I got all excited, and then come to the vote of the bill, she voted no. I said, "Why would you do that? That's like so stupid." She said, "No, it's not stupid." I may not like the bill, but the process that leads up to the full bill, I want to make sure it's the best bill possible, because I know it's going to pass. So, I would just suggest that. Take a look at this, and if the mission is to help the Princeville farmers, but you have this issue, get it out of committee today, put them in the full council, then next week, you can, you can make your case about taking out the state and a county. And if you get the support of the other council members, then, then, then it works. Because regardless, the outcome will be determined. The only difference right now is whether it'll happen next week, Wednesday, or on June 25th. So, I don't, I don't believe in voting aye with reservations or no with reservations. I think you vote yes or no. But I think it's clear that you have issues with the bill. Get it out of committee, and let's have the decision, final decision made next week versus next month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Question by Councilmember Holland?
This is actually a question more on process and procedure. Is it also possible if Councilmember Cowden doesn't agree to abstain from the vote, so she doesn't?
No, sir?
No.
What was the, what was the question?
You have to abstain if you don't agree.
We have to have a majority, I think. So, I can speak on this. First of all, all of your stories mean so much to me, and I care so deeply for what you're doing, and I hundred percent want to support you. I hundred percent want to support you. So, I just heard something different than what I heard in the meeting. I really, my big desire was to help you get through this. And we're saying that this isn't just about the Princeville market, but in terms of people coming, it's been just about the Princeville market. And I have to honor your market manager. She's very good at using social media, getting people out, getting people here, bringing people to the place. So, when we're listening to the constituents, I want you to know, I appreciate your votes that you've done. I didn't just go to those things looking for a vote. I might say I'm, it's never why I'm just going or just buying something. I'm never just looking for a vote. I will continue to purchase your things, whether you're mad at me or not. But who we haven't heard from is all the rest of everybody. We had Carl Imperato came in, and, you know, it's very difficult for him to come in for personal reasons, and he was in pain over it, because he was being chafed right there. And I talked to him afterwards. And it's hard to come in when you know you're going to get a group hard pushback. And it takes courage when you're in office. And so, the difference between this week and if there is a deferral to June 19th, which is what I'm going to be recommending, I'm not making that motion right now. But the difference is, it's June 19th, you're going to have Parks here, who should be here. We're going to have the attorney who's worked on it the whole time. We will have planning here, and you will have five committee members here. And far more likely than not, this is going to pass no problem, because the rest of the island that has attachment to how the parks are used, they're not here, and most people aren't paying attention. And I was at Hillaway Neighborhood Association meeting last night, and almost nobody had even really grotted this was going on. And people are busy, they don't have time to think about it, and then... But you have... You have an urgent, personal reason to need this to happen. You have a direct effect, theirs are secondary. They don't know till they're bothered. They don't know till they're bothered. But I went through decades of this, when there has been repeated pushback on not wanting to commercialize the parks. And I have to honor those people too. And so, I am not trying to, like, I would not want this to die here in committee. Because it could. It could die in committee today by me saying no, both, by me saying no. It could die in committee. I don't want it to do that. I want the full conversation. I will try to get more people forward so that they can feel heard. And I appreciate what he came up with, but, you know, when we talk about the Small Business Regulatory Review Board, I asked in the break how many people came. One person came. Regularly, I go to things that the state puts on here. It is what I call a legal fiction, when it goes out and it's put in the classified ads, and unless somebody knows to look for it, they don't go. So, very often, I go to something, and me, maybe one other person, are the only people in there. And I just go, a lot of times it's KKCR, to hear what's being said. People don't show up, the process doesn't work, because they don't have a spirited person that blessed it to get everybody who agrees with them. And so, I'm letting you know that I'm not going to say yes today, because I don't feel like it's been fairly heard for all the rest of the people who use the parks. I'm letting you know, you can be angry with me, you can say anything you want, but I am not going to, in the end, vote no on it today, because I don't want to kill it. But I cannot live with doing something that I feel like will be great for you, but problematic for the future, problematic for 10 years from now. So, that's, I'm letting you know where I'm at. They haven't had as much, because they don't have the commitment. And they are afraid. They are afraid to come in because of the abusive behavior that happens online.
Okay, follow-up here for Councilmember?
I just want to, you know, Councilmember Cowden said on June 18th...
18th, yeah.
The Parks will be here, the county attorney will be here, planning will be here, everybody will be here. But we can have them all here next week. We can have them all here next week.
They're not here, are they?
And, you know, I think to believe that we can reach out to every single citizen on this island every time we have a bill to get everybody's input, it's just, it doesn't work that way. We don't. I, I think, you know, I, I know Councilmember Cowden makes it seem like she's everywhere and talks to everybody, and, I mean, we all do. We all do, you know. Yeah, maybe I have never been to the Princeville market, but I have been to Grow Farm. I have been to a bunch of markets. I, you know, we love the farmer's markets. I talk to people too, in the community, and honestly, we've had a couple of strong opposition emails and some testimony at the last meeting, but at the end of the day, the support for this bill is overwhelming. It's just overwhelming. It's overwhelming. So, I don't see the rationale of postponing this till the next committee meeting. I think, because nothing will change between now and then. So, we can, what, what, what Councilmember Cowden wants to do on the 18th, we can do next week. And we can, at that point, we'll have everybody here. All the members will be here, it'll be full council meeting, and then we can make the decision at that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify also that a no vote doesn't kill this bill. Right now, we still have to vote on the amendment, which is what we discussed now. If that doesn't go, then we go to the main motion as amended with the original amendment. And a no vote would basically defer the bill. I mean, the bill's not going to die.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a no vote, it would just be a, because we didn't, we didn't get the quorum vote, we didn't get the three, it would just automatically defer to the next committee meeting. The problem with that is that you, you know, we'd just go till, till the 21st, and then again, we're only just three members, so you'd have to defer it again. I wouldn't recommend having this discussion again on the 21st, it makes no sense. So, again, you know, I'll reiterate, I think the ideal way is to get it out and finish it up next week.
Right, Councilmember?
Yeah, I'll just use my second turn or whatever at my talk, but yeah, I don't need Parks, Planning, or attorneys to be here. I know how I'm going to vote, I know that I want this bill to move forward, and I showed up and I'm ready to vote, you know. I'm not going to try and wait for other council members to be here. I'm ready to vote on it, and I'd love to see it move forward. As you mentioned, Chair Vosso, I don't see any changes if there's, you know, we're giving an opportunity to provide more amendments, which we usually don't do in full council, but we are saying, if you have an amendment, then bring it up. Other than that, I don't see any other changes happening from now until the bill getting pushed out to the 18th. It's just going to be the same meeting, you know, with the same end result possibly. So, I'll just really like to encourage us just moving forward. I'm not trying to rush the bill or anything, I'm just saying, we're not going to, unless there's a significant change in what's going to happen, I don't understand the process of holding it up. And again, I don't need Parks or Planning or attorneys to be here to make my decision. I'm ready to vote.
Councilmember Holland?
Yeah, thank you. So, I agree with Councilmember Conaschira. I don't need to hear from those people, because I've met with them excessively on this issue, and they're in support. I just, I'm really disappointed that it would be just delaying for what feels like an unnecessary six weeks. I don't understand if it's very likely that this is going to pass in committee when we do have a full committee, that it makes any sense at all to make these people wait another six weeks to move forward with the process. These people are small business locals that are struggling to survive, that have been closed down for four months or something, five months? I mean, I, I just, I really encourage the movement of this bill, and, yeah.
I just have a final comment after you.
Okay, for me, I got to say, having me involved in so many different ways, but I'm hundred percent supportive of this bill. We got to do it now. I'm going to go into the specifics, because you guys know what it is. But knowing the importance of what we have before us, and I know there's a lot of positives that we've gone to and dadded everything out already. It's already been one, two, three, four, I mean, even this alone is a good thing. But knowing the importance and the understanding of moving this forward sooner than later is important to me. And we have to stand...
And we have to stand firm on that, I believe that. I mean, there's so much discussion and whether you do it later, it doesn't matter. With, everything is laid out. I have every confidence in our administrative side, with our parks guys, with our planning people. There's all the information readily available based upon the information that we already went through. I've gone through that, it's like, what? The longer we wait, the more people, there's an emotional part to this. A lot of our vendors, they used to come up here in tears, their families are being affected. You try wait one more week and say, "I might not be here tomorrow." I might not have, I might not have my, my area to, to sell what I need to do. Even the products and everything that comes, whether it be local products, which is very important, hundred percent. But there's a balance. And if you look at the whole process, everything is laid out in a way that is very important that we make a decision ASAP. And whether it's, because of how, um, it's been laid out and all the work that has been done, I, I, I believe that, for me, in looking and, and reading through everything and understanding the total picture from the west side all the way to the north shore, now we have to move forward. Two more months will take us even further in a positive way if we make the decision now. Sorry, I, I, I just feel passionate because this is a very important part for a lot of us. And so I wanted to just make sure that you understand that from me. And, um, I just want to say again that I'm supportive of this bill. And let's move forward, Imoa, thank you.
Just have one final comment and I haven't changed my mind. And that is because the people who aren't speaking forward, and I've called a number of them, when I've said I have gotten complaints for several years, these two, I haven't counted. The people are afraid to come forward. And then when I've called people and asked them to speak, come in, they, they, they are afraid of the type of a- abuse that happens online, the social abuse that's there. I have people in here, a couple that I have very deep emotional ties to, probably more than you have to me because of young teenage, early teenage times in your lives, critical things, I care about you deeply. But I do not want to capitulate to, um, abuse and intimidation. Had I not been treated the way that I've been treated, I, I would have a, a much easier way to be able to say, "Well, maybe okay." But when I know all these people who do have challenges don't want to come forward because they're afraid of the type of abuse that they'll get, what will be different on the 19th is that you will have, um, a committee who is going to say yes, probably. Probably you will. And so I don't want to kill this bill, whether it's, I mean, I, but so, but I'm, I'm letting you know and I'm done, but I, I have been hearing from too many people who have felt abused and I see the pattern of it. And we need to have the ability for people who want to use parks to be able to be able to say it. So, and I, and I, I see that we have enforcement issues on all kinds of things all over the place and it's not because we have a bad group across the street. We have a group across the street that's overwhelmed. So I'm sticking with my position.
Yeah, I'm gonna be real for a moment. Because, you know, when I first started in politics, Daryl, uh, Arrow's papa, his dad, one of the first things he taught me, he said, "Hey." And I was, I was so green, I didn't know anything about this politics. And he told me, "You gotta learn how to count, you gotta know how to count. You be able to count to four because that's what it takes to do anything on this council." So, I understand Ms. Cauden's passion and, you know, oftentimes we do symbolic votes because we wanna, we wanna make a statement. But we make those symbolic votes knowing that the bill is gonna pass anyway at that moment. You, you don't need to be a rocket scientist to realize, one, two, three, four. Not counting these two who are not here today, but just with what we have, this bill is gonna pass. So the fact that you would hold up this bill today simply means that you want to see Princeville wait another six weeks. Because everybody knows your position, everybody knows your passion, but you know the outcome. The outcome is determined. We know this is gonna pass and the only option is it's gonna pass Wednesday or in six weeks. So for you to not make your position no. I mean, if I'm in your seat, I say, "I'm gonna vote yes to move this forward because I don't want to delay the, the pain we have put on Princeville, but I do not support this bill and I will vote against it at the full council." That's how I would handle this. Because six weeks, me personally, six weeks without income? I'm gonna start getting emotion.
Yeah.
So, do what's right. You can vote no next week.
Speak to me, you're speaking to me.
I'm speaking to the audience.
You're speaking to the camera.
I am speaking to the audience. This is my moment to speak and by the way, am I ready to clock? My time is up. That's all I got, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, roll, roll call vote.
This is on the floor amendment number three. Roll call vote. Councilmembers Cauden?
Aye.
Konashiro?
No.
Presiding Officer Carvalho.
No.
Motion fails.
So now you're back to the main motion as amended.
As amended.
Okay, I wanna be sure on this because it is gonna affect our timing. Um, and if we're wasting everybody's time, if we don't get a unanimous vote, then it's gonna get deferred to May 21st, which, um, is only gonna have three committee members and it's kind of gonna be a waste again because I don't see it doing anything different than what it's doing today with three members and it's gonna end up on June 18th. Uh, ideally, again, like Council Chair Volso said, I would love to see us vote it to Wednesday in approval and if anybody disagrees with it, they can vote it down or what. Um, and if people need to testify at that time against how adamant they are against it, that's the time and if there's any amendments to it, you've said you'd entertain the amendments. But, um, we kinda gotta get to know where we're gonna stand on this because, um, if we just vote on it, it's gonna go to May 21st. Um, and if we're not gonna get the unanimous vote, then we should defer it to the correct date so everybody knows when we're gonna be here. That's just my...
So, not for the bullies, but for the people that I care about very deeply. Not for anybody using a threatening behavior. I will vote yes today and I will probably vote no next week. And, um, I will hopefully be able to work directly with planning and parks. When is he coming back? Because I really want to know better and we don't get to see this amendment till today, right? We go through it very quickly and I'm very familiar with how we have trouble with enforcement. I'm very familiar with the impact of happens when it's complaint-driven. It doesn't go and get inspected. That's why I have a problem with it. Because I don't want to be creating another thing that causes fighting or intimidation. But for a handful of you, you know who you are, especially some who I've committed to their father and his dying son, that I want to support that person. I have a commitment to people who, I know the tragedy that you've been to, through. For you and for any of those who have come in with respectful behavior and have behaved respectfully to the community, I will let it go today.
Okay, thanks, Al.
This is a roll call vote on the motion to recommend approval as amended. Councilmembers Cauden?
Aye.
Konashiro?
Aye.
Presiding Officer Carvalho.
Aye.
Motion passed. This is Simon Lake, too. Thank you for that and the meeting is adjourned.